September fifth, twenty twenty three Planning Board meeting. Our first item, well, actually, I'll, I'll jump ahead. If anyone is on interested in the eighty seven Crane Neck hearing, special permit hearing that's scheduled for eight fifteen, that will be continued to the next meeting this month, which is the nineteenth. But we will do that officially at eight fifteen, but that is not going to happen tonight. So anyway, let's, we're going to hear from the housing consultants regarding the MBTA Communities Act. And I will let Sue take that over after we introduce ourselves. So I'm Brian Murphy, the Chair.
I'm Anne Bardine, member of the Planning Board.
Ray Cook, member of the Planning Board.
Tim Cronin, member of the Planning Board.
And you're muted, Deb, but we've.
Thank you there.
There we go, Deb Hamilton, member of the Planning Board.
There you go. So I'm going to turn it over to Sue, just get a little more background and then introduce our consultant team, who I see is on board with us.
Great, thanks, Brian. Can you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect. So Dylan and Peter are here to take, guide us through next steps. They're going to be showing us some planning or housing scenarios and going through some approaches, some various approaches to zoning. They, of course, did a lot of listening at our last community forum and then our last design workshop, and they've analyzed and assessed and are coming back with what they think might be some viable options and would like to get the community's input on. So I'm just gonna turn it over to Dylan. If there's others on your team that you want to introduce, go ahead and maybe Peter as well, because there still might be some newcomers on.
Sure, I'm Dylan Sussman from Dodson and Flinker. I'm the project manager for this project for Dodson and Flinker. We have Eli Block with us tonight, who has been working on it as well behind the scenes. And then Peter Flinker, who is the principal of the firm, and he'll start off with our presentation tonight.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome to your with Adrian.
Yeah, so we're gonna start with looking at some options for three different properties. And then we're going to talk about options for the zoning. And kind of the short answer, the quick answer that we've come to is that there's no, there's no right way to do this, as far as we can tell. We're trying to find the best balance between the MBTA requirements and what fits in West Newbury. And I wouldn't say it's a moving target, but it's a target that's a little hard to see all the time. Want to go to the next slide, Dylan?
I will, but you know, Peter, I realize that there are probably people on this, on this Zoom who haven't been involved in this project so far. So I thought I should stop for a minute and just bring people up to speed on where we are. So the, the town is subject to what's called the MBTA Communities Law. It's section three of the Massachusetts State Zoning Statute. And it requires every town that's serviced by the MBTA or adjacent to a town that's serviced by the MBTA to adopt at least one zoning district. Have at least one zoning district that allows multifamily housing by right at a density of at least fifteen units per acre. For West Newbury, this means that there needs to be at least one zoning district that has the capacity for eighty seven units. It doesn't mean those eighty seven units are ever going to get built. It just means that the town has to zone for them. So in past meetings, we've talked, we had, we had two public forums so far. One of which was a design workshop where we looked at these sites that we're going to talk about tonight in an interactive way with members of the community who did some modeling. You'll see examples of that tonight. And so one of the major conclusions is, of course, that West Newbury has pretty poor soils for wastewater disposal and no public sewer system. So that limits the capacity of what actually can be built in West Newbury. So Peter's going to show some potential scenarios for housing on three sites. These are speculative plans. They are not being proposed by any actual person. They're solely developed so that we can give people something concrete to look at and say, is that what we want the zoning to result in? And also so that we can then abstract the zoning standards from physical plans, from, from plans of things that might actually get built if there was somebody who wanted to build something and they could make the septic work out and they could make the financing work out and everything else. So that's, that's where we are in this process.
Right, the, the three sites were identified through a process that included townwide mapping to look at of all the sites in town, which ones are big enough that they might be rezoned to, to, to fit the MBTA's purpose? And which ones have the best access, which ones have town water? And which ones seem to have combination of topography and soils that could accommodate a certain amount of development? So they're, they're all sites that are undeveloped now and could be developed in the future, including the Mullen property. As, as you all probably know, the Mullen property is owned by the town and has been considered for development in the past. And so we're not saying this is going to happen, but it could happen. And in any case, it could be zoned to meet the requirements of the MBTA. So it's about thirty four acres, sort of slopes. There's probably about twelve or fifteen acres that are on the upper part next to Main Street, and then it slopes down the hill toward Church Street. There's quite a lot of wetlands as you go further down the hill and relatively good soils. And I guess some years ago, there was a successful perk on the lower end of the property. So the next slide shows, these are three of the, the models that were prepared by different groups at our, our design workshop. And what you're looking at is that the dark line is the outside, the outline of the Mullen property. And then we gave people little model pieces and allowed them to sort of distribute this around the site to think about where could development go and what might it look like? And most people sort of focused on what's logical, which is there are two sort of chunks of land separated by a wetland in the middle of the property. There are two chunks of land, each of which is probably six or seven, eight acres that are up on the main street side, and you could accommodate kind of a cluster of buildings of different types on each of those. So we kind of took this as a starting point. And then also I've looked at the MBTA requirement, which requires, as Dylan said, a minimum of about ninety units at fifteen units an acre, which means you only need to zone about six acres. So the next slide shows some of the, the unit types before we get back to the site. We wanted to talk about at the, at the workshop, we basically presented these four different sort of categories of building types and asked people to vote on them using the, the red dots for things which they didn't like so much and the green dots for things which did seem to be a better fit for West Newbury. And so the upper left is sort of a duplex type of unit, which is pretty common in traditional New England towns. Both in the past and in the present, it's becoming more popular. But you can have sort of an extended farmhouse, you could have a side by side. There's lots of different ways of doing this in a way that looks more like a single large structure. Similarly, below that, there are townhouses. We've been looking at lots of models of doing townhouses, which are basically homes that share a wall, maybe one wall or a wall on both sides with other, other homes. And there's many different places where people have made these look more like an extended farmhouse than like a traditional, you know, condo. And so we're really looking at this traditional sort of farmhouse style extended, almost a manor house style as maybe a model for West Newbury. And then somewhat larger buildings are on the right. There's a so-called walk-up or stacked flats. So this is basically just a building with apartments on multiple levels. So there's one apartment on the first floor, one apartment on the second floor, one apartment on the third floor, which is sort of traditional, you know, Boston triple decker. But again, it doesn't have to look like it belongs in Boston. It can look like something which belongs, hopefully, in West Newbury. Some of the captain's houses in, in Newburyport, which people pointed out were very nice, are already sort of double and tripper of deckers in terms of stacking up the different apartments. And here's some examples from around New England of other, other places that's been done. Now, a stacked flat is sort of one apartment right on top of another. So each apartment has windows all the way around the edge. If you go down to the lower right, a traditional apartment has a center hallway and apartments on both sides. So the apartments have windows on the outside wall, but on the inside wall, they have a door off of a central corridor. So the building itself is, is sort of twice as wide as a house. And then the apartments are stacked up within that two, three, four stories. But as you can see in these pictures, there's a lot of examples of that being done in a very sort of a New England-y style. And a lot of people, as you see, like that example on the, the upper left there. I think that's from Brookline, the one below it is from Devon's, which are kind of a big, a fairly large structure, but designed to be broken up into smaller elements that have, as we say as designers, they have the scale and proportions of a traditional home. So it doesn't look like a giant slab or a shoebox. It looks like sort of a nice collection of, of smaller buildings that happen to be touching. So these are the, so there are four general building types that we've been using to explore development on all of the sites. And we're doing this because these all qualify as multifamily under the MBTA law. And they all are popular styles, increasingly popular styles in development now. So it used to be, you know, twenty years ago was only a big single family house or a giant apartment building that got built. And now there's a lot of interest in what's called the missing metal, which is basically what's represented in these pictures. It sort of houses, it homes that vary from two, three, four, five units. Could be a townhouse or a stacked flat up to twenty or thirty units as an apartment. So it's really looking at the full range of building types that somehow we sort of forgot how to build, because all of these are represented in historic towns. Go to the next slide. We'll get back to our sites. The first one again is the Mullen property extends from Main Street all the way down to Church Street, almost to the river. If you go to the next slide, we're really focusing on that upper part is the most buildable and the most accessible by, from Main Street. And the red outline represents six acres. And again, this is what you have to zone in order to accommodate at fifty units an acre, the ninety or so homes that are required for West Newbury under the MBTA law. So you don't need a big chunk of the Mullen property if you're doing it at fifteen units an acre. And we'll show you what that looks like on the next slide, which is designed to be kind of a traditional village. You come in off the, the lane from Main Street and you sort of arrive at a shared open space. There's an existing house sort of on one side. And on this one, we've sort of developed a, an apartment building, again, an attractively designed apartment building of about twenty units. And then north and south of that, there are townhouse units or stacked flats. And that loop provides access to a series of other small townhouses or stacked flat buildings. And what we're trying to show here is you can have, you know, it's, it's fairly dense, you know, it's fifteen units an acre overall. But with sort of attention to design, you could still have something that's very attractive and, and walkable, because you have this loop road with sidewalks on both sides. You have a limited number of driveways leading to parking, which is as much as possible hidden to the side or to the rear of buildings. So you don't have to see it. It's accessible to the units. You could take advantage of the slope by having the park it down behind the building. So then from the street side, whether you're arriving by car or walking, you have sort of limited interruption with vehicles crossing your path. You can get to your house easily on foot or in a car. And then you have these nice little open spaces that are integrated with the neighborhood. And all of this is, is nothing new. It's really the way people designed, you know, village centers essentially for hundreds of years. And so this is sort of adapting it to the twenty first century. And then, so the road can come in and have a loop. If there's a need to have additional access for safety, you can follow that arrow, which can go out to the south part of the site, to the north, down the hill on a, a sort of an emergency access road and so on. So this is, physically, it fits the site. Again, this is ninety units and a mix of apartments and townhouses, the stacked flats. It, it fits the site, but it requires wastewater treatment, which is not available from the town. So that's at ninety units, that requires a system that can treat ninety units times three hundred gallons a day, which is a lot. And one of the issues in Massachusetts is that once you get over ten thousand gallons a day, your wastewater design requirements are much higher under Title V. So basically, ten thousand units a day is not ninety units, about half that, maybe forty five units to get to ten thousand units a day. So the ninety unit plan would require a larger shared wastewater treatment plant, which is buildable and probably could be built on this site if there was good soils for, for parking, which we believe there are in some locations. But the expense of that essentially private wastewater treatment plant is such that it would be difficult to build ninety units. Typically, the viability for that is probably somewhere between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy five units. So that's sort of the wrinkle that's sort of attached to all of these plans is that the ninety units that are required to be zoned under the MBTA zoning, again, about six acres. It's, it's actually, someone just chatted the question, but it's actually like eighty six or eighty seven units, but we're using ninety as a, sort of easier to remember. You can zone for ninety acres, but ninety units, but probably what somebody is going to be built is represented by the next plan, which is a forty unit plan of ninety bedrooms. And this gives, keeps you under the ten thousand units, not ten thousand gallons a day, I'm sorry, which is the kind of treatment plant that they built at your more recent development projects like Drake's Landing. So there's a reason that all over the state, we're seeing developments that pretty much cap out at about forty units, including Drake's Landing and some of the others. It's because they're staying under that ten thousand gallon a day limit. So probably even if you zoned the, the whole fifteen acres, sorry, the whole six acres at fifteen units an acre, probably what somebody is going to build is about forty units. And so that's similar plan. It could come in with a central open space with a loop road, but in this case, it's entirely done with townhouses. And you'll notice that we, instead of having the parking behind the units, we could have all the parking access from either the street frontage or from an alley in between some of those units. And this allows less of an impact on the overall site. So that's kind of the pattern that we're looking at for each of the three sites. We'll continue to the next one, I think, now. So this is the Knapp property, a little smaller than Mullen at nineteen acres. It extends back again to south of, of Main Street. There's the old Knapp greenhouses. The back of the property you can see in the photograph is, is there's a pond and a lot of wetlands. So it's primarily about the, the front or the, the north, two thirds of the site that's actually developable. Go to the next one. These are some of the, the models that were done at the, the workshop with some additions of sticky notes to tell what's going on. And again, most people came to the conclusion that probably a large cluster in the back of the property would keep the houses hidden from view. And then you could redo where there's existing greenhouses, a sort of a small mixed use center, could have some business uses or that could be entirely residential. So have sort of a, a small cluster up by the road and then a large cluster in the rear. So building off of this, I think our next slide shows the whole property. And this is again, Main Street toward the top of the slide, the property extending north and south. And you see that the wetlands down in the south part. And basically, the, the open fields there, which are that sort of Dunn color, is what's developable. And so, again, looking at sort of carving out a six acre chunk, we're really thinking that probably the most developable part of the site is the part that's already disturbed. And then that, I guess that's sort of the western two thirds. It probably goes up over that knoll and then starts to slope down again toward the wetlands. But the most visible part is that eastern part, sort of the right hand side, which you can see from the street as you look, as you drive past the greenhouses on your right, suddenly you have this big view up across the field. So it'd really be nice to keep that open and undeveloped. So our plan's really looking at, for the sake of argument, what could be fit within this six acre box? And again, the first plan shows six acres times fifteen units an acre. And that's this plan. So this shows an entry road coming in across the street from existing road access. It's always nice to line up those intersections. And then it goes along the property line and then curves out around one of the knolls. And what this does is allow you to keep the road to the side and have a in the north part of the property, a collection of buildings that has a central parking lot. So these could be a combination of townhouses and stacked apartments sort of clustered around parking, which is hidden in the middle. So each of those, you don't see the parking from the road, you don't see the parking from the open space. And everybody in those houses has a nice view, pretty much, looking out onto the fields. And then as you go further south, we have another loop road, which provides access to a combination of townhouses with parking on the front of the units, townhouses with parking and a parking court behind them, and some others that have their parking on the central green space, and then they walk across the street. So again, this is a combination of probably two and a half story townhouses and three story stacked, stacked flat buildings, but designed with sort of varied massings, so they feel more like a, a collection of New England connected farm buildings or manor houses. And then you see that they're sort of arranged, they take advantage of, of the site to have views out on the open space. And also that, that loop road sort of wraps right around the top of one of the knolls and then provides access sort of at the end to a trail that could continue out into the open space. So that's the, the ninety unit plan, again, fifteen units an acre times about six acres. The next one shows, again, what's likely to be built under the ten thousand gallon a day limit under Title V, before you have to go to, again, a much more expensive system. This is about forty, forty units or ninety bedrooms. And so this shows how you could get quite a bit of that, those units on just a much smaller part of the site. I think this is about three and a half acres instead of six. Again, sort of traditional village layout where you come in and there's a, a kind of a village green with the houses lined up to face the green, a nice sidewalk around it. And then the parking and small parking courts in between the rows of units. So what you see is kind of the, the end wall or the end part of the structure. And then the structure heads away from you as you're facing from the street. So you don't get a sense of these buildings being as big as they are, which is sort of a trick of design that allows to fit a fair number of, of buildings on the site without making it feel like so overwhelming. So a lot of these, just as a aside, a lot of these design ideas can be incorporated to the zoning as part of the design guidelines. So we're, or I guess they would be design standards because they're required. And so you have more control, we believe, and Dylan will talk more about this later, than you do with sort of a traditional subdivision. Not just sort of the grades of the roads and so on, the number of trees, but the placement of the roads and the buildings and the open spaces, all of which can allow you to do what we're trying to do, which is to emulate the traditions of walkable, attractive New England villages, right? So the next slide takes us to the last property we're going to talk about tonight, which is the Dunn property, about fifteen acres. Again, the greenhouse business and some very large fields, which have been in agriculture for a long time, but not necessarily actively used recently. But it is prime farmland. So we're really thinking about how can, again, we cluster the development of this property to get our ninety, ninety units if we're trying to do that and leave the best part of the property. Ninety ninety units if we're trying to do that and leave the best part of the property as open space. So the next slide. So it's a site, sort of looking from the the southwest, and you can also see um for scale. Drake's Landing there. Uh which is a similarly sized parcel with a long road that comes in and a couple of loops, and it's probably typical of what. Developers would be trying to do on any of these sites. Uh which is to maximize the number of units while minimizing the the frontage. So if we go back to the the Dunn property. With the next slide, here's some of the. Models from the the workshop, and it's a variety of ideas, some people on the on the left there sort of clustered the development on the east side of the property. With a little bit of mixed use on Main Street, uh the center one or the right one, they've kept more of the open space on the. West side of the, east side of the property, developed the knoll on the east side. I've sort of come to a conclusion that probably the best development area is. The existing greenhouses on the the east side of the property, the area behind them, partly because that sort of slopes toward the center. So the runoff isn't going to any of the surrounding properties, but staying within the within the site, and I'll show you what that looks like the next slide. So this is sort of looking again at uh six. Six acres of the site that would be, if you zone this, it would provide a fifteen units an acre, about ninety units. As required, and then that knoll on the the left, or the the west side of the property could be preserved as open space. So the next slide shows, again, a kind of a village-based plan for that, the road coming in, you could uh. Add to the existing. Structures on Main Street and have a little mixed-use center there, or it could be apartments with parking behind them, and then the road comes in and wraps up the hill. Uh and then, again, a series of small open spaces and development clusters with a combination of. Parking behind them or parking from the street, I think we have a zoom in on this. There it is, so this again, the pink. Pinkish roses color are are pedestrian pedestrian paths, so there's a sidewalk that comes in along the the entry road. And then that sidewalk wraps around a a little open space. Uh there's a couple of larger apartment buildings tucked into the hill. On the the right-hand side, which is the east side of the property, so sort of take advantage of the topography to tuck those. Larger buildings back, and those could have, you know, twenty twenty-two units on three stories. And then in front of the the first one, there's a nice green space, which is shared by a couple of. Other structures that could be townhouses or stacked flats, and again, trying to get as much as possible the parking behind them. Or in this case, we're having parking actually on the ground floor of the apartments, because they're set into the hill, we can put parking in the basement. Pretty easily, and then you continue to sort of that upper cluster to the the bottom part of the plan here, where again, we have. Uh parking courts with uh townhouses and stacked flats, another apartment building, but trying to get a sense of. All the buildings sort of sharing a space that comes down through the center and provides. Space for a path that could lead out into the open space and wrap around. The big, the big meadow and connect to any adjacent open space as well, so again, it's it's uh a lot of, a lot of. Homes, ninety homes on this six acres, but trying to figure out how can we design it so it's. Not just an efficient layout, but something that's attractive, interesting to drive through, interesting to walk through. And a nice place to live with plenty of access to open space, so all of those design principles again can be incorporated. In in the the standards that go along with the zoning. So the next one again is, well, what if you can't get. Enough wastewater treatment on the site for ninety units, what if you can only build forty units? So this is basically a similar development footprint, but the houses spread out a little bit more. With the open spaces a little bit more generous, so if you go to the next one, I think, zooming in on this. Uh you could see there's, again, sort of two neighborhood clusters with each their own open space and. What I think always makes a a village kind of development more interesting is if you come up through the open space, you discover the cluster surrounded by buildings. You go sort of through the buildings and then discover another open space and so on, it's part of what makes. You know, a traditional village interesting is it's it's sort of three-dimensional. And you discover different things as you go through it, so again, this is a little bit more of a rural plan. With a winding road and the houses sort of lined up along the edge of the road with more space around each of the units, but again, we're trying to get. Uh the parking sort of in between the units, in this case with shared driveways that provide access to the side of the unit. So you're not looking at the parking garages from the street. And then those two central ones get their garage access off that little alley that's connecting our our loop road. So again, regardless of the density, you can incorporate these different kinds of design standards. To make that density as as work as well as possible. So the last thing we want to show you was something that uh we were asked to do, which is look at how this. Could be extended to incorporate some of the neighboring properties uh to the east. And haven't done a full build out of that, but we did sketch out sort of how the roads might work, do we have that in the next slide, Dylan? Right, so this is looking at the the Dunn property on the left, and then in the center. There are several other properties that are accessible from Main Street. And that extends, there's one large one in the center, which has. Sort of a house on Main Street which could provide, if you tore that house down with a house next to it, a new road connection. That would provide access to that land in the back, and then there's another property. Uh in between that and the Drake's Landing Road. Which also seems to be pretty developable, it could provide access, particularly if you could get road access to Drake's Landing. You could connect all the way through this, sort of across the. It's not flat, but it's sort of at the same level, all the way across to the Dunn property, and now the sketch, I think, the next. Slide that sort of shows how that road network might work, so we have the the road we were looking at extending through the Dunn property and up the hill. That could be connected uh in a loop that connects across the property lines and sort of. Across that knoll, provide access to more uh house sites, and then connect all the way across to. Perhaps to the Drake's Landing Road with a couple, with a loop there that would provide access to another area. And then a potential connection again down to Main Street, if you couldn't get access to Drake's Landing Road. You could build a road down to Main Street, it would be, all of these are. Could be designed to be compliant with the the six percent maximum grade under the town's subdivision regulations. But with a fair amount of cut and fill, I did look at it, uh you would have to, especially to get that road up through the center. For Main Street, it's basically six percent all the way up with probably a six-foot. Uh to make the grades work. So. Again, we haven't done a full build out of this, we sort of wanted to ask you if you thought it was worthwhile, but you could, in fact. You could have a a six-acre chunk of Dunn, as we showed before, and then if you look at that, I sort of drew a dashed line there. On the the two properties to the east, but that's another six-acre chunk, basically from. The top of the the frontage lots along Main Street to about halfway down the site. With the road in the middle, that's another six-acre chunk. So there's. Plenty of room for development, uh the question is, as Dylan will get into. What's the best strategy for zoning these different properties to comply with MBTA? But also to produce and encourage the kind of results that you want to see as a town in terms of future development potential. Dylan, do we want to stop and take any questions at this point, or do you want to? Talk about the zoning first?
There was one question in the chat which I I don't have an answer to, which is by way of comparison, how many units are on Drake's Landing and on what acreage? Does anybody from the planning board or? Or Sue know the answer to that question? Sorry, I knew it in the past, but I don't don't remember it today. Does anybody from the planning board have an answer?
I don't, I don't off the top of my head, but I can look it up and put it in the chat.
Yeah, I I I think we have a, you know, thirty thirty-two, thirty-three units, but the acreage I. I can't recall the acreage, we would have to look that up.
Okay, thanks. Um Peter, I think we should keep on moving through the zoning and then take questions at the end.
Okay.
Um so. So yeah. Um so zoning approaches, so. There are a variety of different ways that the town could approach this. Um and it really depends on what the town's goals are. Um for housing and its compliance. So the the first approach is what I'll call the minimal approach. Which is to adopt an overlay district that allows fifteen units per acre on six acres. Technically, it's five-point-eight acres, but we're calling it six just to make it easier to say. On one of the following properties, so either Dunn. Or Mullen or Nap, right, this this is the approach to meet your minimum requirements. Of those, Mullen is the most. Uh challenging to implement because it requires the town issuing an RFP. Or being well on its way to disposition before it adopts zoning. Um because that's a requirement of the MBTA communities law. So the minimum of minimum approach again is to zone. A portion of one of these parcels. Um for about five-point-eight acres. The next approach is to um. Limit the size of each development, so sticking with that six-acre or five-point-eight-acre. Maximum district, um but to zone all three of these areas, or maybe it's additional five-point-eight-acre. Areas on some of the properties that are adjacent to the Dunn property. Um the idea with this is that. The town is unlikely to get the ninety acres that the, or the eighty-seven acres that the law is is. Calling the town to create capacity for. So technically, you can zone five-point-eight acres. Knowing that it's not really feasible to build a wastewater treatment plant. Um for that, and so you'll never get those ninety acres. But to be sort of in keeping with the spirit of the law, maybe it makes sense to zone three acres, in which case, or three areas, in which case. You're gonna get, you could potentially get closer to those eighty-seven acres, right? So you're you're producing the housing that. Some genius who wrote the state law thought was the fair share for West Newbury. You know, West Newbury does have significant housing challenges, we heard a lot about that in the previous public forums, people talking about how. There isn't, uh there aren't, you, there aren't small houses for older residents of West Newbury to downsize to. Um and so they're they're stuck in big houses that they they don't want to be in. Um and if they had the choice to downsize to something smaller in West Newbury, they might, which would free up existing houses for new people to move in. You know, it's also a challenge for for younger people who either want to stay in West Newbury, who grew up there, or who want to settle there. Um that your housing is so skewed toward. Single-family houses, which are expensive and generally large. So this is an approach that. Could sort of spread the impacts um and. Potentially produce more housing, though it's not likely to produce. Truly um ninety units on each of these parcels, right? They're they're calibrated. To not produce ninety units on any of these um examples. So. I guess I should, I should pause there and say that this is a. Uh I guess a a direction that we think makes sense, which is to limit, rather than zoning the entirety of the nap parcel. Or zoning the entirety of the Dunn parcel, you know, Dunn, for example, would be fifteen units if you rezoned it entirely. Um which, if you would be required to rezone it at fifteen units per acre. And therefore, it have have a yield of two-hundred-twenty-five units under the zoning. Which is getting into the the range where a wastewater treatment plant would be feasible. So, big policy question for the town is, do you want to make wastewater treatment plants feasible through this rezoning? In other words, do you want to be rezoning for? Development in the range of a hundred fifty to two hundred units. Which, you know, you you have previously had a wastewater treatment study that. It was something the town was considering whether it makes sense to have wastewater treatment in this in this village center area. Um and this is potentially a way to get that, and hopefully, and then potentially there could be some sort of public-private partnership where. That wastewater treatment facility. Hopefully has extra capacity that could um. Be used for some of the properties along Main Street that. Don't have an easy time getting a viable septic. So, um I think we aren't showing, we aren't showing a plan tonight that shows. Zoning any one of these parcels in its entirety for fifteen units per acre. Um instead, we're showing. We're assuming the town does not want to pursue wastewater treatment plant, does not want a hundred and fifty to two hundred units on any one of these sites. Okay, so zoning, that's approach two, approach three um is to pursue both. Compliance with the MBTA community's law and what's called Chapter Forty-R, so that's called the Smart Growth. Overlay zoning district, it's another special provision of of Massachusetts state law. Um and its big advantage for West Newbury is that it has this, it's stat- it statutorily empowers design standards. So, communities have, and their lawyers, have different opinions about whether design standards. Are allowed under Massachusetts zoning law. Um there are many communities in the state of Massachusetts that have, that that have design standards, they're administered through site plan approval. So, and and the guidelines for the MBTA community. Law, you know, point to this and sort of pointed as as a good thing to do. Um but if West Newbury is uncomfortable with having design standards through zoning. Um they're specifically allowed through Chapter Forty-R, so Chapter Forty-R is a way to to have design standards if you're. If your lawyers are uncomfortable with it. The other advantage of Chapter Forty-R is, it's a, it's a state, it's something the state wants communities to adopt. Um so you're sort of, you're getting in line and that makes you. You're you're playing ball and you may qualify, you may get more points on on grants. Um and then the third thing is that there are there are incentive and bonus payments that are given to communities for adopting these Forty-R districts. The first is is a payment just for doing, for zoning a certain number of units. Um and then there's a payment for every unit that gets built, um and there are also offsets from new school enrollment. So there's a monetary benefit to it, I think most communities find that money is not the reason to do it. The reasons to do it is because you believe in smart growth, um and you you want this kind of zoning. So, in this case, what the Smart Growth Overlay District would do. Is establish one portion of one property as your MBTA compliant zone. So it'd be that roughly six-acre chunk that would be zoned. Um to comply with both MBTA communities requirement and Forty-R requirements, they have different densities that they call for, so. You could do either two to three families at fifteen units per acre, or you could do three or, you know, four or more units. Buildings at twenty units per acre, because Chapter Forty-R requires twenty units per acre for what they call multifamily, which is. Four or more units. Okay, so, little complicated there, happy to talk about it again if somebody wants to ask a question about that. Um so the first part of this is you would zone either Mullen or Dunn. Or both, if you wanted to, um and then the remainder of the Dunn property and some of the adjacent ones. And some of the backlands at Mullen could be zoned for a lower density than MBTA communities law requires. But that complies with Chapter Forty-R, so it could be. So it could be single-family houses at eight units per acre or two to three family houses at twelve units per acre. Somebody asked earlier about Drake's Landing. When we've looked at previous development like Drake's Landing or Follinsby Way, I believe it's called, those are averaging about one unit per acre. Those numbers are a little bit misleading, right? Because Follinsby is, is clustered on a small portion of the lot with a very large portion as, as open space. And the same is true for Drake's Landing, where most of the front, the front half of the lot is, is all wetlands, and so it's undevelopable. But those are roughly one, one unit per acre, one to two. So, you know, zoning this for single-family at eight units per acre, or two to three families at twelve units per acre would be adding housing capacity to this area beyond what the current zoning allows. Okay, the next approach, this is the last approach, is to start with that minimal approach, the MBTA, MBTA Law. So in this case, maybe it's Dunn, maybe it's Knapp, and then improve the sort of, the base zoning for those other portions that were shown in yellow previously for Chapter forty R, right? So improve the base zoning for your business district. Maybe it's expanding the business district to capture a little bit of the Dunn property so that you could have additional mixed use or, or commercial use on the front where the greenhouse is used, where the the retail used to be, and then rezoning the back of part of Dunn and adjacent properties, and as well as along Main Street to allow more housing. Maybe it's allowing existing houses along Main Street to be converted to two or three units. And maybe it's allowing, you know, single-family at four units an acre, or townhouses at six units an acre on both the Mullen and the backlands of three thirty-one and three thirty-seven Main Street. So this approach is adopt an MBTA compliant zone, and then change your base zoning for other portions. This gives you kind of the, the most flexibility in terms of what you can do with other areas, but you're not tapping into any kind of state program to do it. So then, the next question is, what are the parameters for those chunks that have to comply with the MBTA Communities Law? We're proposing that there's, you know, a minimum lot size of, of five acres. To some degree, that's a little bit meaningless because we're proposing that you zone something, where you zone discrete portions of parcels to ultimately limit the development potential of them. And then for that lot, you have, as I say, a twenty-foot front setback and then side and rear setbacks of thirty feet. So we're talking about the setbacks on the lot. We have to come up with these numbers in order to comply with the law and be able to test the zoning. In reality, it's very unlikely that anybody's going to actually develop multifamily in a context like this with buildings on individual lots. So if you've seen with previous development in your town of similar scale, it basically gets developed as a condo development where all of the buildings are essentially on one lot. But for the purposes of this, what that's telling you is that there would be buffers along the edge of the parcel. And then an open space requirement of, of about thirty percent. In terms of, we recommend that there are building types called out in zoning, and that you specifically allow two families, three to five families, and there will be design standards to go along with, you know, what kind, what you want for three to five families, so steering those towards that kind of farmhouse massing or the manor massing that was on a previous slide. Stacked flats, six to twelve units, and apartments of ten to twenty units. So limiting the, the overall size of the apartments and the stacked flats to something that seems more in keeping with West Newbury. In terms of building standards, the recommendation here is to limit the maximum height to three stories, to set the space, minimum space between buildings to ten feet, which is what you were seeing more or less on the plans that Peter showed. All these numbers are reflecting what's, what was shown on the plans. Minimize, setting the minimum space between buildings and the street line, basically the edge of sidewalk to five feet. Setting a standard that, that doesn't allow a person to have an overly long building. So the standard would limit the length of any wall on a building to forty feet unless there's a little change in plane, a bump out or bump in of at least two feet. This is trying to break up that massing, right? Required all buildings to have a pedestrian entrance facing a street, not allowing flat roofs, and setting the maximum length of any roof to be forty feet without a change of, of direction or a change in plane or change in pitch. That's getting towards the kind of things you, that we saw people liked in the examples that Peter showed earlier. And then requiring garage doors to be setback from the front facade by allowing at least two feet. In terms of parking requirements, we recommend that you set the minimum parking to one point five spaces per unit. Allow shared parking by right within a common plan of development. Require that all parking areas be located to the side, the rear, or within buildings, and then, again, the garage I already talked about. And then set a standard that no more than a third of the front facade of any building can be garage doors. Okay, so now it's time for discussion. So I'm going to stop sharing and just see if there are any clarifying questions before we get into the kinds of things we want to talk about, or get your input on.
Yeah, Peter and Dylan, thank you. That's terrific presentation. It's an awful lot for all of us to unpack here.
Yeah.
You know, I, I certainly have some thoughts, and I, I think I'd like to just quickly see if the board members want to weigh in, but then we'll quickly take some comments from members of the public. As I said, just an awful lot to unpack. I know for me, I'm, you know, the, the idea of a, a large septic treatment facility is not what I'm interested in, but, you know, if, if it turns out that, you know, that's, that's where the, the town wishes to go, well, then, so, so be it. The, so anyway, let, let me see if the board members want to weigh in first. Anne? You're, you're, Anne, you're muted? Anne?
I know I am, but I don't have anything to say. I think Ray does.
Yep. Yes. This, this has got to be will of the town. Because, you know, in the end, this is going to go before the town and town meeting. We have to comply with the law, and it's got to get a favorable vote. I mean, I'm strongly in favor of more affordable housing, so people can stay in town if they need to, and so that there's housing for young families and people that work, live and work in town. But I, you know, I can also see how there might be a strong will of the town to do the absolute minimum possible. So I don't know how we get solid feedback before this comes, before the town in a town meeting. So those are my concerns. I, I kind of like a broader approach. I agree with Brian. I don't think this is the town where a wastewater treatment plant goes well. I think that's, I think that's a, a step too far. But again, will of the town. So that's, that's just my input. I appreciate all the, all the work put into this, and I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Tim?
Yes, I just had one clarifying question, if you would. Regarding the Mullen property, there was an RFP and a disposition process that was mentioned because the property is town-owned, and just for folks that aren't that familiar with those kind of restrictions, I was just wondering if you could perhaps explain a little bit more and, you know, what the level of difficulty is there?
Yeah, so basically, in order for it to qualify under the MBTA Communities Act, the town has to be well underway in the process of converting it from town-owned property to privately owned property so that it can be developed. So the process for that is usually a town would figure out what it wants on the property and set a bunch of conditions into a document that describes what they want, and then issue a request for proposals with conditions to potential developers to purchase the property. The town went through this for the Mullen property back in circa two thousand eight, I believe, where a full, a, a committee developed a plan for housing on the site, developed all the documents that would be required for the RFP, and brought it to town meeting to see whether the town wanted to, I guess, issue that RFP. And it was rejected at town meeting. So you would need to go through that process before you can really adopt the zoning in good conscience.
And I would think make some demonstration to the DHCD. Is that, is that it?
Yeah, exactly.
I see. Sorry, Brian.
No, no, that, that's fine. So I, I think what, you know, the planning board is tasked with, you know, working with you over the next number of months, is to hone down this, your, the options that you presented, and see what we can get for additional feedback, perhaps leading to a, another public forum. You know, it, it, my understanding, the, the zoning law that we proposed for town meeting will, will, will be something that we, we think has enough input and backing of people in the town, given participation here in, in a forum. We're, we're not going to town meeting with, you know, option A, B, and C here, and we all vote on that. We, we are going to come up with a, some sort of a, we're crafting a, a particular bylaw. And this is the first step, and it, it's got to seem very confusing and daunting for everyone else who's listening here. So, but again, I, I just appreciate you giving us all of the, the parameters here, and it's a lot to take in tonight, for sure. So I, I do think it's appropriate that we, we try to hear from some members of the public, and, and we do have plenty of time tonight. So I think if people, if you, if you know how to use the little question function on, on here, that's fine. Otherwise, you can speak, unmute and speak up. We'll, we'll try to make this work.
You know, I, I've got a quick question. I don't know if it's easy to put the slides up. When you were looking at the, just sketching out the possibility of using of zoning multiple contiguous properties side by side, you had a pencil sketch there. And there were three driveway approaches into that property. There you go, right there. That middle driveway, is, is that just, is that just a sort of an, an editorial oops there because you're going through that piece of property as opposed to the one next door, which is actually the one that corresponds to the back acreage?
I, I may be wrong, but I believe that both those properties are in the same ownership, and the owner considers the one where I'm showing the road is probably the better one to place the road.
Thanks for that clarification.
Both of them have the same challenges, basically, of getting the road up the hill. And of course, both of them would require tearing down one of the houses.
Gotcha. Thank you. I saw, Brian, that John Sarkis has his hand up.
Yes. Oh, great. Okay. Hi, John. Yeah.
Hi, guys. How are you?
Hi there.
Good to see you all again. I have just a, a question as to to the consultants, whether or not their involvement will include any type of financial feasibility analysis on any of the various scenarios that, and I understand they're only hypothetical scenarios, but they still would be a lot more valuable if we knew whether or not they are financially feasible in today, or tomorrow, or five years from now.
I'm sorry to say that that's not in our scope. I can understand that it would be, would be valuable. So if you have local developers or, or people who you think are knowledgeable on this, we'd be happy to talk to them and sort of get a anecdotal impression, but doing pro formas for these developments is not in our scope.
Okay, thank you.
Brian?
I saw somebody else's hand. Yes. Anne, how are you? Go ahead.
My question is, in terms of the Dunn property or the Knapp property, what are, what are, what are the town's opportunities to purchase these properties? I know they're really important in terms of this, you know, this analysis, but neither one of them are, as far as I know, under agreement. And so how, how does that work into this analysis?
This, this is not a town purchase. This, this is zoning for private development. The town would not be purchasing these parcels.
Okay, so the, so what we're talking about is changing zoning laws that would allow those particular parcels to be eligible for this type of development.
That's, it, it would be a pri, totally private entity wanting to do this. And, and it lets us meet the letter of the law for the MBTA Communities Act. You know, is, is the reality that somebody's going to want to come in and do this? I don't know. Would somebody want to come in and, and build, you know, five or six homes on the Knapp instead of going through this?
Right, right.
I don't know that, but it would, it's totally private.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that, Brian, I mean, if it, you know, if it involved the Mullen property, and it was the will of the town, and God knows what entities within the town, there might be a request for proposals made on the, on the land that the town already owns.
You, you're absolutely correct. We could, because we own that already.
Right. But on the other parcels, you'd just be establishing zoning that would, you know, affect what could be done on that property. And, you know, in some ways, it might increase the value of the property. But that would, that would be a private transaction between the current owners and a prospective buyer and prospective developer.
Yeah, Mullen, Mullen property was always, in, in my view, purchased with the intent to deal with the private developer, sell it to him for nominal amount of money and control the development of that property in the way the town would like. It failed the first time, but you know what? The town's used a lot, and I think it, I think it worked.
You're, you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
Some other questions. I saw someone else out there. Sue, could you look at, Sue, could you look at the chat, please, and see if there's some questions open for us?
Yeah, Brian, there's, there's a question in the chat about design standards and the rezoning, and that kind of goes to what Anne just said about, we'll call it control, design control. Maybe Dawson of Linker can clarify the level of control that's permitted, would, would be permitted with the new zoning?
Yeah. It, it's an open question to some degree because there haven't been bylaws for the, for the program to because there haven't been bylaws for the, for the program to review and reject. But they, you know, they do say in their guidance that they expect design standards and reasonable design standards are okay, as long as the design standards are objective and they don't compromise the financial feasibility of a project. So you, you know, requiring gold toilets would not be financially feasible. But I think the kinds of things that we've described are, are within the realm of reasonable, reasonableness and they're objective.
And then would you add to that, the 40R consideration?
There's, you know, there's a pretty good body of design standards for chapter 40R. The kind of things that we described are, are in bylaws for 40R. They're in design standards. We've written for 40R previously. So, you know, the, the difference, I think, with chapter 40R is that there's that statutory, they've been enabled by statute. So there's no question from the town's, town council's perspective that they're allowed.
Yeah, and the fact that there's a legal history there that can be drawn upon.
Yeah.
But the 40R, just to make sure everybody's aware of it, the 40R would be sort of like an additional thing we could do while we're trying to comply with the MBTA law that's being imposed upon us. It's not, it's an option, but it's not part of what's required.
Right. It's an option and it's, it gives you some benefits and it also introduces a lot of complication. Because it has its own process for adoption, which is complicated. And it has its own definitions and requirements that are not perfectly aligned with MBTA Communities law. So I'm not trying to dissuade you from doing it. I think it's a legitimate option, but it is a complicated option.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, from, for me, it, it is maybe a bite of the apple is just too much for us at the moment. This, this is complicated enough. And to, to, and, and, and we, we've been all dealing in zoning matters for a number of years. Those of us who've been on the board. So, but I see there, there's a couple of other questions. I,
Brian, before you go on, there's a second part to that question that, which was, how does the planning board feel about construing and applying design standards? Is the planning board in favor of taking that on? I don't know if you guys can answer that today, but I just.
Well, I, I, I think in general, you know, we, we've, that, that question always comes up. It, it, it's, it's, do we, do we really want to tell people totally what they can and cannot do? And, and that's, that can be a very slippery slope to, to try, try to, try to climb. In some degree, when we do special permits, like we did with the Follinsby Lane and Drake's Landing, there's, there is a design that the developer provides. And, you know, we do get into, we, we, a mix of looks and appearances. And so a special permit gives us some flexibility in that. But, you know, I, I, I think I'd have to understand exactly how far a, a design standard would, would reach. I, I would like to see something if we were going to do a, you know, this, this specialized district in, in one or two, all three of these parcels, that there, there is a review process, just that it, it kind of is what the, the townspeople would like to see in, 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 in a, a look. As opposed to what some other developers may be doing for cost purposes or, or whatever. So, Anne?
Brian, and maybe Dylan can correct me if I'm wrong. Isn't, wouldn't, in this case, the design standards be kind of front end loaded? That is to say, if it's a by right bylaw, they would be incorporated into the bylaw so that the discretionary portion would be practically non-existent. We would have to live with whatever the language of the bylaw was.
Yeah, they, they would need to be objective. So there would need to be something where you're going through and site plan approval and you're saying, did they do this yet or no?
Thank you.
Good.
Yeah, and, and I'm just going to jump in. I mean, it was clear from the, the sessions that we've done before that townsfolk have a pretty strong opinion about what looks good and what doesn't look good. So although I agree with Brian, we, we've been, get fancy with my language here. We've been loathe to get into the looks and style of people building homes all around West Newbury. That's, that's not our, our place. But with special permits, we have paid attention. And I think with this kind of bylaw, I think we would have to have some design standards to make sure that the town got something that it would like. And also so that people had some reassurance when it came to town meeting vote, that they had a pretty good feel for what, what it meant and what it could mean if a developer wanted to take advantage of it.
Okay, so I think I saw Jean Trusquet Lambert had her hand up. Jean, are you there?
Yes, I, I am. My question may have been all or partially answered by the discussion that just happened, but I'll take a stab at it anyway. I'm wondering if a property that the town owns, such as the Mullen property, were the one that was zoned as opposed to one of the currently privately owned properties, would the town have more discretion about choice of developer and design standards? I guess what I'm, I'm envisioning is we've had some 40B issues in this town and have staved off at least one of them. And I guess I'm hoping that a developer couldn't run rampant. You did touch on this in the previous several speakers, but what are the chances of, of, of a developer running rampant? And are those chances more in a private property versus a town owned property like the Mullen property?
Yeah, good, good question, Jean. Dylan, can you kind of run with that a little bit?
You would have more control through the RFP. But the complication of that and getting your zoning passed is formidable. I guess if, if you're, you're looking for my advice, I would advise you not to pursue the Mullen property for MBTA Communities compliance. Because I don't think it's worth the, the complication. And I think if the town is looking to get the best possible housing development out of that property, you can do that on your own without MBTA Communities compliance. And you, you may do something different that didn't actually comply with MBTA, MBTA Community compliance.
That's a very interesting take, Dylan. Thank you. That, that may have made our lives a little bit easier.
Well, I mean, just, just to clarify, Dylan, the complication you're talking about is the complication of getting approval by, by the state. It's not anything practical on the town's end. And as Dylan says, you can decide right now that if you want to have, it sounds like part of the impetus for the previous proposal was to develop more affordable housing. And you can do that right now because you own it.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And, yes.
So for example, the law limits you to having 10% affordable housing. I should have mentioned earlier, that's one of the reasons for going with 40R is then you can have up to 20%, require up to 20% affordable housing. But if the town was putting out an RFP for the Mullen property, you might want to have more than 10% affordable housing. And you could do that through an RFP if you weren't trying to do the MBTA Communities thing at the same time.
I don't get how they're mutually exclusive. I mean, if we own the land, why, why is it more arduous than if it's privately owned to comply with MBTA?
Just in terms of timing, you have to have gotten your ducks in a row for the disposition of the property, turning the property over to private property before you can adopt your zoning.
Yeah, I mean, for whatever reason, the way they wrote the MBTA law seemed to discourage towns from just zoning land they already own.
It doesn't seem to. It explicitly excludes town owned land unless you like convince them that it's viable.
They want to, they want you to really mean it. I mean, it's, it's sort of, this whole discussion is sort of illustrates a larger thing that's going on here, which is what often happens with zoning, and we run into this a lot as consultants, is people say, well, please write this zoning. And then we say, well, what do you want to have happen? And you discover that there really isn't a consensus about what you want to have happen. So there's sort of two things that are going on here, especially as you think forward to town meeting. It's like, do we, how do we get agreement as to what the future should be for any of these parcels? And if we can get a consensus about that, then passing the zoning is easy. But it's sort of, that's, that's why the sort of the visioning we're doing, looking at these different properties and actually playing out the site plans, we hope is helpful in sort of defining, well, would this be terrible if it was developed in this way? And if not this way, what way would be better? Or should we just buy as an open space and make that happen? So let's, so let's try to come to a consensus on those planning questions first, the visioning questions. And then the zoning will fall in place. Not automatically, but it'll be a lot easier than trying to have the dog chasing its tail.
I see a question with Nathan Dennis, and then I'll get back to Anne O'Sullivan. Nathan, you there?
Yes, Brian, I'm here.
Hi there.
Question for you, Dylan, I guess two parts to this. One, is there any liability on the town? I know you sent out a notice from the planning board that identified multiple parcels. And then in your proposal, you turn around and select specific parcels. So as a town, let's just say we have identified an area on Main Street for this MBTA zone of five acres that you say. Do we need to allow five acres of zoning for an MBTA community on any parcel that meets the guidelines that you're proposing? Because if you don't, are we discriminating against a landowner?
I think that the question is this, so first of all, I think the town could investigate adopting similar five acre zones on other properties if they want to do more. We looked at the properties that were previously identified in the planning process and were explored at the public forum. And we chose to stick with that because we'd already done the work, we'd already done the public input. It, it may be that some other properties like 317 and what is it, 331 Main Street are viable as well. Us not looking at them tonight doesn't mean that they're not viable. Just means that those aren't the ones we looked at. Now, that said, the, the previous planning process, I think, identified Dunn for reasonable reasons, like that it has open land, that it's not that visible from the road, that the wetlands are in the back, not running through the middle of the site. And so I think there, there are reasonable reasons why the town would adopt zoning for, for the Dunn property as opposed to some of the other properties that were shown on the map for maybe being upzoned, but not upzoned through MBTA Communities.
No, that's a fair answer. Second question is, you referenced 40R, which is what you recommended an overlay of. But you made inference that you could use the 40R to offset the number of units for the MBTA requirement if it was done properly. And in doing so, the town would also benefit from zoning the number of units allowed. They'd receive a payment from the state and we'd also receive offset for schoolchildren that were sent there in terms of a cost for that. So why wouldn't we be looking at zoning multiple parcels, whether it be Naps and Duns and Mullins and other parcels over five acres into 40R so that the town could reap the financial benefit of allowing those units to be built? Or just by proposing the zoning, we would receive a payment. Then if any of those units were actually built, we would receive another stipend from the state. And then we'd have an offset on the school system as well, if there were children in those units that, that actually attended our schools.
Yeah, so I think you made a really good case for why 40R is, you know, ah, sorry, I'm just going to go back to the slide here. So this is, oh geez. One more time. Okay. So this, this is what you're referring to. So this is the, that 40R approach. And the idea here is that everything that's shown here would be included within the 40R district. So.
But why don't we even, why don't we even go a step further? Why don't, why don't we go, why don't we go to a point where we would take a look at, let's say, Naps Greenhouse and something else, you know? And maybe you're only looking at a specific set of parcels. But what would be the disadvantage as a town? You know, I know there's some larger parcels, let's say, out on Ash Street or some of the other, other roads in town that have substantial acreage. What would be the disadvantage of us in zoning multiple parcels 40R to not only A, cover the MBTA, knowing, knowing that we can only build realistically 90 bedrooms or 40, 40 units on any one site based on the Title V law? So why, why wouldn't we try to diversify that? So we could spread out the impact of, of the units. So you don't have necessarily a 90 unit cluster until we meet that particular requirement as designed by the state. So we would zone it with the bylaw that says the first 90 units built here would meet our MBTA requirements. And that would be the end of it, but someone could continue in 40R and we would still reap the benefits of that. And maybe not have a cluster as large as 40. Maybe you have 35 on one, or maybe you get a portion of affordable housing in there.
Yeah, okay. So there are a couple of things in there. The, the first part, you were asking why these areas and not other, other areas in town? It's because only some areas qualify for chapter 40R. So I'll, I'll share my screen again. So. You all saw me on the, on the slide and I said from current slide. Okay, here we go. So this, this yellow is a rough guess that, an area that any parcel touching this area potentially can be considered, could be part of a 40R district. Likely anything outside of this yellow would not qualify. Just, that's the way the statute of chapter 40R is written. It has to be for you, for your community, it needs to be an existing rural village in the way they define that. You can draw something like this because it's stretching from your existing business district to some town functions that are named in the guidelines for chapter 40R. So if you want to pursue chapter 40R, this is the area in which you can do it. And I, possibly you could squeeze in other areas, but I kind of doubt it.
No, that's, that's fine. That answers, that answers that question.
Okay, and so the, the other question is about the 15 units per acre. I think I didn't totally understand your question.
It wasn't, it wasn't the fifth, like MBTA says you have to put 50 units an acre. We need, let's call it 90 units for, for basic math. But let's just say you have 30 acres and you propose, in, in 40R, you propose a third an acre.
We have to comply with MBTA Communities requirement, at least. If you're going to, you have to comply with MBTA Communities law. That has to be a minimum of 5.8 acres. Anything that's going to comply with that law has to be 15 units per acre. And it isn't like you can say, well, we're going to zone 50 acres and once we hit 90 units, we're done. You have to zone those, if you're going to zone 50 acres, you're zoning for 50 times 15 and you are. That's your capacity and you have to allow that by right.
I got you, but we also know by right that no one can put more than a ten thousand gallon system, mo- most likely, it's not economically feasible. Any developer which limits you to say thirty units for whatever you zone.
Yeah, so that was the idea of zoning multiple hunks. So that you can get to a bigger number under the realistic.
Right, what I'm saying is, so you wanna, but what I'm saying is, can you use that forty R? So if you zone a district that may not be able to sustain the, the building of that unless you demolish the whole thing. Can you obtain your MBTA requirement through forty R? So that you don't necessarily have to build such a dense community.
It has to be at least fifteen units per acre for at least five point eight acres. You, you can't get around MBTA communities through forty R, you can overlay the two and try to meet. Both of their requirements, which are different simultaneously.
Okay, so you can't, you can't basically build a unit on a forty R and get a credit for the MBTA unit that's required. That was the question I was asking.
Not about what's built, it's about what's zoned, and it has to be zoned at the minimum required density.
Yeah, and then, and this just, this is just in, shows you why combining forty R with the MBTA law is confusing to everybody.
Yeah, no, good questions, Nathan, excellent questions. For us, as, as we all grapple with, you know, the, the, the legal issue before us. You know, with a timeline is the MBTA bylaw. And we've become intrigued with the forty R. And that may be something we look at if this is successful in passing in the spring. But the, the, the complexities of trying to overlay them right now, I think is beyond what the, the town can handle.
No, I think you may have to propose them separately, I was.
But it, it, it is, it does have good components that. You know, once we get this one out of the way, we'll certainly spend some time on, and we'll be sure to call you. Sue, our, our player Sue Brown has a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, when they were talking about, there's also funds that offset schoolchildren cost. I just want to clarify, that's called the forty S. And I just wanted to clarify that it is available, but it's own, you only get those mon, that money, that amount of money per child. If the project itself does not create enough funds to pay for those school costs. So it's not for every child that comes out of a program, you get this amount of money for school costs. There's a pretty in-depth mathematical equation that says you're getting this much from taxes, there's this much that. This typically applies to schoolchildren out of your budget. So it's not a, it's not, it's not, you know, pot of money for each child that comes out of it. I just want to clarify, it's, it also is complicated.
Thank you.
Sue, I just have a procedural question here. I, I don't see any names on here that. I think we're waiting for the eighty-seven Kranek public hearing. You think we can put off rescheduling that until this discussion is over?
Or you could open it quickly and, and close it as quickly. So I thi- I don't think you're attached to a time, it couldn't be before eight fifteen, but it can be after.
I think we should continue trying to discuss matters here. Try to give Dylan and Peter some more meat. I, I, I was intrigued, Dylan, with your comment that you thought the Mullen should be taken off the, the table. And, and, you know, we're, we're looking at how, how we start to try to make this whole thing work, that's an interesting idea for us. I didn't know if the other board members wanted to comment about that.
Yeah, I'll just say that, I just want to underline what Dylan or whoever it was said that. We own that land and Anne O'Sullivan and others have lots of experience with this, you do too, Brian. We can do whatever we, you know, we can issue an RFP that says whatever we want it to say tomorrow if we want to. So if we're eager to develop housing there, yes, it won't, it won't address this MBTA issue. But it will allow us the ultimate amount of control and flexibility for creating housing in town. So those who want to, you know, go gangbusters creating housing, you know, they should go for that. And I think the MBTA, I, I, I think ta- taking it off the table makes sense because. We retain so much flexibility if we do that.
Yeah, that make, that makes sense to me. And just in case there's somebody here who doesn't know, RFP is a request for proposal. In other words, some town entity would wanted to look out, loo- look at developing the land and then, and then. Put something out there that all sorts of developers could see and then see if anybody wanted to propose something for that land.
Kim, do you want to weigh in on that?
I'm a little surprised we took that turn. I thought it was a, you know, a viable. Property in some respects and during the design session, you know, there was a lot of interest in it. I understand it could be complicated, but you know, I think for the reasons that Anne articulated, aside from the complications. You know, there's still some potential there in the town, you know, would have more control over the future of that property. So where it is town owned, I think it's probably appropriate result.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, you know, I, I presume Deb who's listening would, would agree with that pronouncement.
We, but this is top priority for the Affordable Housing Trust to. Get interest in there in building affordable units. Yeah, I, I. I wish they, I, I, I'm, I'm still not real clear on why they are mutually exclusive. I, I know MBTA is just about multi, multifamily units. Without consideration. Yeah, we'd like a lot more than ten or twenty percent of that Mullen development to be affordable.
So Peter and Dylan, I mean, I'm hearing a consensus of the board that says we should pull the Mullen off the. Consideration here. So that, that, that probably helps you in some degree. What, what other, not, not that we're on a roll to, to. Crafting everything else tonight, but what, what else would you like us to, we, we have some extra time here. I, I don't know how much more time you want to give us.
My, I guess the, the key question is. Is, is there a consensus that sort of limiting the zoning to these six acre chunks is the best strategy? And how many? As, as, as was pointed out, there are other properties which you could also include if you don't include Mullen. And you want to do three because you want to. Sort of advance the spirit of, of the law and say. We want to have three projects that are probably going to be thirty units each. To comply with our ninety-ish MBTA. Responsibilities, so therefore we will have three properties at six acres. I guess that's, that's a decision you're gonna have to make and not necessarily tonight, but. Before we finish the project, certainly.
Just a, a question, i- if, if we're only looking, if Dunn has. I think you said twelve, around twelve upish acres. Why would we only rezone six acres of it? Why can't we zone, rezone all twelve acres? And do more units there?
You certainly could, and that's, that's again, it's a policy question as to what you're trying to get out of this. If you zone more than six acres, each of those additional acres is required to provide fifteen units an acre by right. So if you did ten acres, you're up to a hundred and fifty units.
Okay, alright.
Twenty acres, it's three hundred units by right. And of course, of course, it's the wastewater that's going to actually define what gets built. As we said earlier, we believe that probably if you get above a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five units, you. In terms of cost feasibility, probably make it feasible for a private wastewater treatment plant. Which wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing, they're not, you know, they're not any more obnoxious now than. Than a smaller plant and probably produces better quality runoff or, or effluent. But you have then that impetus to build more units, so that's, that's a key qual- policy question you're going to have to resolve.
Anne, you had a question?
Yeah, I guess I would just, again, without trying to lead the whole discussion, I'll just make a point that. Doing multiple six acre chunks comes down again on the side of flexibility. It doesn't favor any one particular place or whatever, appear to favor or to disadvantage in one particular place. It gives flexibility and also allows an opportunity for the market to work, dare I say, you know, housing is very market. You know, driven by finances in the market, this allows potential developers to look at different scenarios and see what might make the most sense.
There's a developer online, John Sarkis, who probably liked.
John Sarkis has a. Has his hand up. Hi, John.
I'd like to speak to this very matter. If, if, if the intent is to actually get something built. Rather than just comply with the state's mandate of zoning something. You can't do a six acre piece, there's nothing to work with there. It, it's, it's small, tight, you're, if you do that, you're gonna likely end up with a big building. Because that's the only way you could get density, you know, or enough units out of a project to make it. Worth doing, if you will. So, you know, just having planned numbers of projects in the past. You know, in, in my mind, I rarely look at anything that's less than ten acres unless it has sewer. So, so just think about that, if the goal is really to get some housing built. You've gotta, you've gotta come up with something that we can work with. For a roadway in, a septic system, a leach field, you know, at, at a thirty minute perk versus a two minute perk. Think about how much space that burns up, think about how much space the, the, the drainage systems burn up. And then, you know, of course, the units and the roadways themselves. So if you, if you zone any of these things down to six acres, you, you're either gonna get a big building on it. With a parking lot visible to how, you know, to handle all, all the cars. Or you're not gonna get anything at all. It's that simple.
John, what do you suggest?
Well, it, it, that's not a good. I, I can't be the one who answers a question like that, it's the will of the town. If the will of the town is that we actually want to do something about affordable housing. Read what the state just said to you. Keep the government out of the way, make it by right, as little as is possible and get housing built. And they've done it to all the MBT, they've requested this of all the MBTA communities. I think if you were to do the math, you'd see that this could conceivably generate thousands of new units. Within the next, say, ten years. That is a bigger force right there, whether they're, whether they're affordable or not, just having thousands of new units built. Helps the imbalance of supply and demand that we have. And that's the greatest force in creating affordable housing.
Excellent point, John. Thank you, Anne.
Just want to remind people, this is not an affordable housing project, this in fact is limited to ten percent affordability. Which our town already does under the inclusionary bylaw anyway. This is about creating supply, as John said. Flood the market with units and, you know, bingo, the, the prices will begin to, to level off somewhat.
But, you know, developers will have to get their math right, make sure that they can make a profit on something. And so, you know, this is sort of self-limiting. I, I wanted to point out that Paulina Swartz really got to the heart of the matter in my mind. And that's, that's the question. Do we want to just do something to comply with the MBTA law? Or do we want to actually try to bring more housing into West Newbury? By using this opportunity with the MBTA law. And that's, that's the toughest question facing us. And we really don't know what to do until we answer that question.
Yeah, and so we laid out several alternatives. All of them comply with the MBTA community law. And some of them provide more opportunities for more housing than others.
Yeah, I, I guess my point is, I mean, we. We could just barely, we, we could just do the minimum to meet the letter of the law. While quietly knowing that because of things John brought up and, and, you know, septic and all that kind of stuff. It's just not gonna happen. Or, or we can pick one of your other alternatives. Where actually having a developer come and build something is more likely. And the, the question is, what's gonna, what's gonna be the will of the town? And until, until we figure out how we're gonna proceed there, I, I don't think we can choose between the options you presented.
Okay, I, there's a few more questions, and I'll go back to John Sarkis, because maybe he has a comment directly related to this current discussion. John? Did you have your hand up again, John?
I know, I, I left it up, but, but to the, to the feasibility matter. You know, I think it's, it's critical to know what construction costs are today. Particularly in multifamily buildings. Where the units would all be smaller than a three thousand single family house. So, you know, my three thousand square foot, single family houses today. Run, run me my cost without road, without the roadway, without the land, just the house themselves. Run me about three hundred to four hundred bucks a square foot. When you build multifamily homes, the units are all smaller and the requirements. The, the building code requirements are much stricter. Fire separation, fire suppression. Egress. Things of that nature drive the cost up pretty good. When we're talking about buildings that might be limited to ten or twelve. Units versus a building that has two hundred units in it. So the, the scale building suitable for West, West Newbury. And I'm sure there are those who would argue that a ten or twelve unit building isn't even suitable for West Newbury. But a, a, a building that size is gonna cost us about four hundred. Dollars a square foot, somewhere in that range, I don't have it exact, but the last twenty-two unit building I looked at. And Priceout came in about that. And, and that's just, that's without the road. And at a thousand square foot a unit for like an apartment, say, you know, that's, that's. Just, just my cost to build it, four hundred thousand a unit. We're not really creating any really affordable housing, are we? If you add in land, add in infrastructure, add in reasonable profit. It, commissions, interest carry, all the legal fees associated with this, all the design fees associated with this. And, you know, everything else that no one really knows about, that's in a real developer's pro forma. You know, it's gonna put that unit up, you know, somewhere around five hundred and fifty, six hundred thousand dollars just to create it. And then sell it after that. Is there any reason to be building six and seven hundred thousand dollar, one thousand square foot units in West Newbury?
Yeah, you make an excellent point.
So John, what's, what's your alternative proposal?
Oh, I don't, I don't have one, there isn't an answer, there's no silver bullet to this. The, the only thing that I, I say is, is that we have to take, take the. Take the direction from the state. The state is saying, developers, please build housing. Cities and towns, get out of the way and let the developers, please build housing. So that the supply increases. That's the only thing, that's the only natural force out there. That's the only thing, that's the only natural force out there. With greater supply, pricing will level out. Even if, even if 700,000 dollar and 800,000 dollar units got built in West Newbury as part of this regulation. Someone's gonna move up probably from a 500,000 dollar unit into that. Someone's gonna move up from a 300 into the 500. And we're gonna have an open 300,000 dollar unit as a result. Of what might get built in West New, Newbury under the MBTA zoning initiative. It's still a step in the right direction.
Good point. Thank you. See, I, I think next was Ann O'Sullivan, then I have Nathan Dennis. So, Ann?
Hey, so I was. Listening to Ray's comments and it, it reminded me of. The change in education standards. Where all of a sudden, everything was geared toward children passing the MCAS. And, and all of a sudden, it seems like West Newbury is talking about whatever we have to do to meet this MBTA. Housing standard. And it, it distresses me that Mullen is not gonna be part of that. Opportunity, but that doesn't mean that the town still can't move forward. With Mullen as a, a, a separate initiative by the town to create affordable housing for its residents. So even though it's not gonna click that box, I still think it's important and I don't think it should be. Discarded as, well, we can't, it can't be everything to everyone, so we're just gonna forget about it. So, that was my.
Yeah, and I think what I'm hearing from the, what I, I think what I've heard from several of the board members is that Mullen is actually too good of an opportunity. To waste on the MBTA community's law.
Right. I think it's a perfect, it's perfect, it's sort of centrally located. Uh, it has tons of opportunity. That's how we always saw it. Uh, so it distresses me when it gets dismissed as, okay, well. It's not gonna work for this MBTA initiative. I get it, but that doesn't mean the town has to abandon it. Let it sit there for another 10 years. It's, it's exasperating, but.
It is.
Right. And I did like Nate, Nate Dennis. I, I really appreciated his comments. Uh, trying to clarify the situation in terms of. Acreage, housing and, and that whole thing. So I, I thought that was very helpful. Thanks, Nate.
Welcome, man.
Nathan, you're up. Go ahead. Thank.
Dylan, I guess two questions that came about this from John's comments, because I, I tremendously agree with John that. If you give someone six acres, there's, there's no way they can build you anything that is visually appealing to West Newbury. Or doesn't result in one of these monstrous buildings that they're gonna be by right able to build under the MBTA. Zoning law. And I think there's a careful balance that we have to have as. We need to build housing, um, because we have a shortage of it. But at the same time, we want it to be aesthetically pleasing and go with the looks of West Newbury. So I guess my question to you, Dylan, would be. Two things. If we were to zone a chunk of land, let's say six acres for MBTA housing, because that's what we need. Is there a way to write into our bylaw that. The planning board can extend that lot as it's drawn to. Be considered completely usable for MBTA standards in order to benefit things with a design standard like. Open space, septic, stormwater runoff, um, any of those items can, is there a way to do that that. Allows us to. Zone the minimum so we don't put ourselves where we use zone, let's say a 12 acre parcel at 15 units an acre. Now you're talking about 180 units. So you could shrink that down, but still be within the MBTA standards.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna share my screen again. We'll see if this button works this time. Nope. Not working again. Yeah, that time will work. So that's what this, this proposal is, Nathan, is zoning. A portion, maybe it's this portion undone, maybe it's something over here. I don't know. It's some six acre chunk. But the rest of this area is rezoned as well. And it's rezoned to allow. A feasible density of development, an economically feasible density of development. That's also acceptable to the will of the town. Right? So maybe it's, I don't know what the magic number is for West Newbury. But maybe it allows.
I'm gonna go with 33 bedroom units based on wastewater.
Yeah, okay.
But that's gonna, that's gonna be my, my thought. Um, but my, my point to you is you've designed this six acre chunk, which you. Call MBTA zoned. And then you overlay 40R. What I don't think we wanna.
So this, this one is not 40R. This is saying just change the base zoning, not complying with 40R. Maybe you're making. Three families by right. Maybe you're making open space, your, your cluster by law by rights. You're giving developers all kinds of flexibility to develop really good developments. Without empowering them to develop at a density that's beyond probably what many people in West Newbury want.
Right, but I think what we're, what John's point was on six acres, you don't have, even with the density of 30 units, if that. If that, if that acreage or that lot is 12 acres and you're zoning six of it. Can you zone, can you increase that so that you get the same. Result of six acres, but can you use the whole parcel in the MBTA development is what the question is?
Yeah.
If you, if you zone. I'm, I, I don't, we've said this before, if you zone all of the Dunn property, which is 15 acres at 15 units per acre. You're, you're empowering 225 units.
Right, but what I'm saying is, we only wanna, we only wanna empower. Let's say the six, six acres were required to, to get our 90 units.
Yep.
But we want a developer to come in and say, I wanna build 90 units, which we know is gonna be, say, 30.
30 units, yep.
We want them to be able to use the whole 15 acres to spread out the 30 units so that they maximize open space, drainage. Septic and everything else. So how do we accomplish that? While not allowing 225 units on 15 acres?
I think you do something like this proposal.
Yeah, you, you, you still, you still. Only zone the six acres at the 15 per.
You don't, when you zone this for 15 units per acre maximum, the developer doesn't have to build 15 units per acre. They can, their developer can straddle the zone. Right? So you can use all of this and they can.
That was, that was the question that, that I had, that I was confused on.
Yeah, you'd still, you'd still have to restrict the MBTA area to just the six acres. To prevent things from going theoretically ignoring the septic issue from going crazy. And then the rest of the acreage could be used, it could be an open space development, I suppose. I mean, there's different ways you could divide it up. Um, so you know, there might, you might have that real dense portion over there. And then you still have lots of units over here and an open space development. And, yeah.
Dylan, can you go back to the plans that we had for the Dunn?
Yeah, Dylan, I, I, I guess I'm, I, I, I think Nathan brought up a good point. On, on the six acre piece and, and we, we know nobody can, you can't fit the 90 units there, but. Does a septic have to be within that six acres?
That's, I share that question, Brian, and I think the answer is no, right? It's, it's, it's still one parcel. It just is divided into two zoning districts.
Okay, well, that, that's, cause I, I, I couldn't see how you could get the septic in there.
Yeah, no, that's, my assumption is you use the whole parcel.
Yeah.
To, to benefit the dense part that you're developing. So, and that's part of what sells this, right? It's that you're not. It's, it's kind of like an open space subdivision in a way, is you develop part of it density. Part of it more densely, then you're keeping the rest of it as open space.
Okay, I, yeah, maybe.
That could include your, that could include your septic system.
So, the, where this sprung from is, you know, we were looking at a parcel like this or any one of these and thinking. Well, it makes sense to preserve some of this. Prime farmland that's beautiful and visible from the road. And to develop a smaller portion at the density that's required. So, you know, we went down the road of, well, can you somehow mix open space development with MBTA community's law? And the answer is basically no, because. Once you rezone this entire Dunn parcel, you're up to 225 units. Even if you say 50% of it has to be. Preserved, it, it means that somebody can build 225 units theoretically on. 50% of the site. And they're gonna be forced to build the very biggest buildings. Um, and cover as much of that lot as possible. So. I think our conclusion was. Make a smaller area and. And hopefully somebody will build on the part that's sensible to build on and preserve the part that's not.
But the, the, I, I just wanna be clear, that the, the, the part that you're. Not showing any buildings on can be used for septic and stormwater management?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
And open space.
And, and, yes. Uh, the question from John Sarkis, I see.
So I had the same question, Brian. I was, you know, been thinking about that. Generally, I'd say that's not a smart idea to say zone, zone one area. Under MBTA, but allow other area to be used to, to service that development. And the reason is, what, what rules, what set of bylaws, regulations apply to the other land now? As you go to develop it. Now, is that section subject to site plan review? Uh, or subject to some special permit? Uh, but not the section where the housing is? I mean, to, to me, that, that's just convoluting things. Opening, opening someone up to a potential appeal, where the whole purpose of the bylaw is to try and limit that. Uh, or the, or the MBTA zoning initiative is to limit that. You know, any type of complexity. Minimizes or reduces the chance that you'll be successful.
So, John, I think we could write a provision into the zoning that says that. Adjacent portions of a parcel that are zoned for MB, you know, zoned for this law. Zoned for this compliance can be used for septic, open space, stormwater management. You know. To be reviewed by a site plan approval.
So it just goes to, to my point, is that really you'd need more land than the six to, to, six acres to do anything usable. So you, you know, you, you're right, you'd have to come up with some sort of well-crafted. Bylaw that a developer is gonna feel comfortable with. You know, feel protected by, let's say, you know?
Yep. Yeah, and I think that all of us agree that the 90 unit plan is probably not feasible. Because of.
No, believe me, I, I've done, I've done my own sketches on all of these parcels. And many more in town over the years. And, and, you know, always wondered what it would be like to just get rid of zoning and let me do what I wanna do, you know? And even, even getting rid of zoning, as like you, you all hit on it, you know? You, 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 you can't really build a lot here. You've, you've gotta sell the unit or rent the unit. You know, there's a, there's a, a market demand that you have to meet before you try anything anyway. You know, it, it, can you sell a one bedroom unit in West Newbury somewhere? For something that yields a profit? Yeah, I don't know. You can do that in the north end of Boston, we know that. I don't know that you can do it in West Newbury. But, uh, like I say, having carte blanche, I still never get anywhere near 15 units an acre on anything I've ever, ever looked at, not even close.
Right, uh, Brian, can I say something? Yeah, I, I just, I, I want people to understand because this is very complicated. I think those of us who've been looking at zoning bylaws for years are really working hard to hold this in our heads. It's a kind of a counterintuitive law. But here's what could happen, it seems to me. Say we zone a six acre portion of one of these lots. We, and it yielded some amount of housing. Any amount of housing it yielded would be better than nothing. 10, 20, 30, maybe 40 units, according to some of the Johnson and Flinker sketches, right? So that would do two things. It would comply with the MBTA Communities Act and it would create some housing. Then the town needs to have a hybrid thinking about this, a multi-pronged thinking about this. Then we also issue an RFP for Mullen. And we also decide, gee, 40R sounds good, or that other, you know, town center development sounds good. We do other things, many other things, all with the goal of creating housing. But the most proximate thing we're trying to do right now is make sure we comply with this law. While letting people understand all the other ways we have to create housing. So, that's my piece.
Well, well put, Ann. Very, very concise and, uh, I think it sets the roadmap for us here. Um, so we've been at this for two hours. And, oh, I just see another question. I was looking for us to wrap up, but Dan and Patricia have a question.
Actually, it's a thumbs up, Brian.
Oh, is that a thumbs up? Sorry, that's my eyeballs are getting tired, I guess. Should we kind of wrap this up, Dylan and Peter, at this juncture? And, and, you know, we'll, we'll be continuing to discuss this at, at our future meetings. I. Again, it's. Maybe you can also then transmit something from this gathering back to Sue. And, uh, you know, I, I think we've, we've done well. We, we've taken the Mullen off the table. Because we think there's a higher use of that land for the town. And, uh. I actually feel a lot better just clarifying that we can. Do the septic and stormwater on the same parcel, but not within the six acres. I, I was under a misconception there. So. Do you wanna have any other final comments? Any board members or? No?
Yeah, two things that I think that we'll be looking at based on this conversation are, you know, is six acres too small to be feasible? Um, and. We focused on. The Dunn property, but looking, I think it's. Worth exploring whether there are other areas within that general neighborhood that makes sense as well.
Okay. Good point. Okay, everyone? Ready to move on? I think so. Thank you very much. Peter and Dylan and, and Eli for you, for your time tonight. And all the hard work you've put into this. It's, it's evident and we, we will get there.
You will.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
No, no, the, we appreciate it. Thanks, thanks again.
Thanks. Have a good night.
You too. Terrific discussion, everybody. That's why I couldn't see if it was a question or a thumbs up. Let's take care of the, uh, setting the next meeting for the 87 Crane Neck. Hearing. So, uh, do we need to open? We need to open that. Okay.
Open each one.
Yes, uh, is that with a motion here? I, I moved to open the, uh, special permit hearing for 87 Crane Neck. For the reduced furnished lot and common driveway.
Second.
All those in favor? Brian Murphy.
Tim Cronin.
And Tim.
And Verdi.
Aye.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, since we are not going to be discussing that tonight, uh, they requested a continuance. To our September 19th. That, I think I have that correct.
That is correct.
So, um. we we do, we already have a couple of things on our agenda. Do you have a a sense of the timing this should be at?
So the only other, so we do have, we do have the hearing, the ADU and the nonconforming, um, bylaw hearing. Um, and we also have the hearing on a special, there'll be a special permit, there's been a special permit application um, for a kennel in a residential zone. So those are the two other things or three other things that will be on that meeting.
Uh huh. Well, um, have we set a time for the ADU yet? Um, is that in the notice?
It says at a meeting starting at seven. So I think it might make sense to have those first.
All right.
Public hearing.
The public hearing.
On the bylaws?
Yes.
I agree. Should the 87 Crane Neck be next or I don't know the specifics of the kennel hearing?
Yeah, the the other one is straightforward, but no. I think it's, I think it, I don't think it really matters which order that you put them in. I don't have a strong feeling either way.
It's a courtesy. We might want to do the continued one second and let the newcomers wait until last. We're feeling curious. I don't know.
Sure. Should we set that for 7:30? Do we, you know, that? Is a half an hour enough time for our public hearings? More than likely, probably.
Perhaps. I think I think there is considerable interest in the ADU one, but I don't know if that means there'll be a lot of questions or
Right. I think 7:30 and if it if we run a little late, we'll just we'll just make note of that. So 7:30 for the, uh, 87 Crane Neck. And, uh, that's the big unknown of how long that's going to take. Kennel hearing, 8:30?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the, uh, the 87 Crane Neck Special Permit Reduced Furnished Lot and a Common Driveway will be continued to September 19th at 7:30 PM. I guess that that, uh, I I move what I just mentioned.
I second what you just moved.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Verdine.
Brian Murphy.
Tim Cronin.
Hey, Deb, every five zero, thank you. Okay, let's see. Go back to the agenda here.
Oh, it's the proposed accessory dwelling and unit.
Yes. And nonconforming bylaw discussion. Can you pull those up?
Yes.
I think that was mostly the town council commentary.
That's correct. So let me get it up in front of me and then I will share that. Can you see this?
Just a little bigger will be better for me, but.
Oh.
There. But
Yeah, whoops.
Can you see it?
A little too big.
No, it's too sorry.
Yep.
That's good.
That's good.
Okay. So, um, town council noted that, um, she felt that the the definition should be exactly what is in, um, section 3A. So she's suggesting that we use this one.
What is section 3A?
That's the, um, the zoning that allows this to go by right to or not to be go by right, that allows, um, um, this zoning for, um, housing to be approved to by a simple majority. So this is the accessory dwelling unit. Um, definition that that bylaw uses.
It was
So the bylaw, section 3A, actually, in addition to be in the MBTA, there was a number of I'm not, I don't, it, there were a number of, um, housing bylaws that could be, um, approved by a simple majority.
Okay, so it's from the enabling legislation?
Yes.
Okay, I've got it. Okay, I always thought it was some section 3A of ours and I was very confused, sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
So I guess that answers the question I had, um, which was about the limitation about the one half of of the floor area. So that's from the statute?
That is from the statute. Yeah, so that does add another wrinkle.
Right.
Doesn't one that we had that you had earlier.
Right, the nine, 900 square feet looks familiar.
Yeah, so it's whichever is smaller though. So I I me as I finally wrapped my mind around the math there. That what that's trying to do is make sure that the newly created unit uh, is not, in fact, bigger than the one that to which it's, you know, attached, so. It just took me a minute to kind of
Yeah, I mean, if you have a small, a very small house, like I wasn't I wasn't thinking about the one and a half or the, sorry, the one half of the floor limitation. We were talking about this before. I was just more focused on the 900 square feet.
You know, I I don't like it. Because what's it, what this is saying is if I got a house of 1,500 square feet, that the accessory dwelling unit has to be 750 feet or smaller. I mean, you get to a point where that's just not practical. Whereas if I've got a, if I've got a house of 1,500 square feet and I can do a 900 square foot ADU, then that that could, that could work for somebody. You know, and you get, you get into, uh, an accessory dwelling unit where, you know, you might want to accommodate somebody in a wheelchair. Just the fact that you got a wheelchair means that you need more room in the kitchen kind of thing.
Yeah, bathroom hallways, all of it, you know?
Yeah, so I
Hmm, that's interesting. Well, Sue, was her concerned that if we didn't mirror, mirror that we could run afoul of the 50%?
Yes.
Vote?
Yes.
Do you think that's a realistic concern?
Certainly a, certainly a benefit.
I mean, it was expressed
But I don't know.
By town council, but I think a little skepticism is not unusual.
Yeah, and remember that, um, so just like the 900 square feet, if someone wanted to make something bigger than one half the floor area, I assume that we could allow that to be by
Special permit.
Special permit, right? Yes.
Yeah, well, okay, let me, I I just gave one more little, uh, thing and then I'll be quiet about this. It's when you've got something like this, it's, it's confusing math to a lot of people.
It is confusing.
Yeah.
To include math at all is confusing.
Yeah, so I mean, uh, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm wondering why this wasn't in some of the other examples that we looked at of this definition. At least it didn't jump out at me.
Yeah, well, a lot of the, um, a lot of the ADU legislation was put forward before this 50% vote was allowed. So they didn't need to, you know, they didn't need to try to mirror that language. And if you're not concerned with the 50%, if you think it's, um, a two third is not a high hurdle, um,
Well, I think, I I think it's okay to ask whether this is really necessary. That would be my suggestion.
I think
Ask town council, you mean?
Yes.
I think so. I mean, is there some particular reason to think that any variation from the enabling legislation is going to change that vote percentage? That seems odd to me.
Yeah.
Not every other, not every other word we have came from that.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, interestingly enough, there's another portion, even mentioning a special permit, she thought we might need to have that added by a different warrant article. So she was going to get back to me on that. She does, she does, it's quite strict.
They're really scared about this, aren't they?
That's town council's role to be very conservative.
Well, they're, they're playing their role very well.
So, well, I'm not sure what we should do with this. You know, we have the hearing next week on this thing.
Two weeks, yeah.
Well, I think we could ask for clarification on this and that we've just mentioned. And we're already owed clarification on the special permit part. So I think
That's right.
That clarification before the hearing.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
So the other thing is, oops, go ahead. The other thing that she pointed out was that dwelling unit, we have it already defined, which this is our current definition. We made it, we changed it slightly, um, to mirror what she said, but she said if it's fine to do that, we would just need to and we put it out there, we have to strike through your language and underline the new language. So do we want to make this small change since we already defined dwelling unit in the, in the, in our regular definition section?
See there, she's not worried about the enabling legislation.
Right, because they don't define dwelling unit.
And I I'm confused.
What's the difference, really?
Well, no, I'm confused is why we need to show a strike through with old language.
Oh, because that's, that's how they do it in the, in the warrant. Anything new is underlined and bold and anything that we're getting proposing to get rid of, we strike through it.
The whole bylaw is new. There is no accessory
That's why you'll see it's all bold and underlined.
Right, so we wouldn't have to strike through anything because this is just
That's right, except for the, in the, in the, in the definition section, we would need to show that definition.
Why are we changing?
What, you mean the definition section of our, the rest of our bylaw?
Yes, it could, because we defined dwelling unit in so this bylaw is to change a few of our, to add to, change one on definition and add others. So this would be a new definition. This dwelling unit, we'd either keep our current, which is fine, we wouldn't have to do anything, or if we change it, we just need to strike through the, this strike
I I would just keep it.
It's not substantially different.
Let's just keep it. Let's
Yeah, it was a state.
Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
It's, it's, says the same thing.
It 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 really does, yeah.
Yeah. So
Perfect, thank you. So then the only other one is this, in terms of definitions, the other one is, um, the two family dwelling is not used in this bylaw. And she said, do you want it added to definitions? Or should you want, do you want to just leave it undefined? It's not used in accessory dwelling unit bylaws.
Maybe we leave it out altogether?
Leave it out, leave it out, yeah.
And and do we need to?
Why do we need?
I don't, do we need the single family dwelling? Because the reason I hesitate now is because we're not actually going to be checking to make sure that everybody lives there is in the same family.
Oh, that's a term of art. That doesn't mean you're a family.
Right.
There's roommates and all kinds of stuff, right?
Right.
Okay.
I think we do use the term single family dwelling. And we realized it hadn't been defined.
We don't have the rest of the language there.
We do use two family residential
Oh, that's, you're at the next bylaw now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Where did
The language isn't there. I don't know where it is.
Oh.
Yeah, this is what I mentioned to you, Sue, that it's blank. There's a couple of pages.
All right, well, let me find that. That's weird. How did that happen? Guess I didn't realize that the rest of it was gone. Let me find it. Try sharing this again. Can you see this?
Yes.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so here's the rest of it. The rest is she's okay with all this. She did note that the, she thought the two bedroom restriction could be subject to challenge by the AG or at least by she might flag it. She said, in her opinion, it's better to just limit the overall size of the unit, which we've already done. Um, and to not talk about two bedrooms. Um, she recognizes, she recognizes that other towns have done it, but, um, she just cautioned against it, so that's
Yeah, and you know, people get around this anyway by saying that this thing that looks like a bedroom is actually an office. Seems like an unnecessary.
Yeah. Yeah, and it is, it is restricted by Title V anyway, septic, it won't, you can't do
Yeah.
Right. I'm fine with leaving out that portion.
And then the only other thing, as I mentioned, and she's going to get back to me, is the language about the special permit, if it has to go in a separate bylaw.
I'll just say that if if we do that, you know,
It's so
Scroll back up, where it mentions the 900 square feet?
Yep.
I think it's probably we don't want it to read differently in the two different places. So if it could just refer to the previous place, that would be better. Or if you're going to repeat it, then you got to have the half of the principal dwelling unit thing here as well.
Oh, yes.
But we're hoping she might let us get rid of that. I don't know. We don't know. Yeah.
But yeah.
Be the same.
Generally speaking, it's better not to have redundancy.
Yeah.
Just refer to it?
So it'll be better, better to refer to it. She'll be no greater than the allotted space per whatever, or, you know? I don't, I don't think that, hmm. I don't think that the the allowed, uh, floor area should be part of the definition. I think that the the floor area
Yeah.
Definition, the 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 allowed, the allowed space should only be here.
Yeah, let's look at that again.
But that's where you and town council disagree.
Yeah, because, because what this this is doing here is is actually adding sort of like defining what your maximum space is and all that kind of stuff. That shouldn't be here.
No.
That should be in the bylaw.
Yeah, I think you could just eliminate the number one and just have that be one long sentence.
Well, what I'm saying is that
Roll one.
Here, under definitions
I get you.
I I would eliminate everything after and parking requirements. Boom. And then all that other stuff should be in the bylaw.
Yeah, but that's not what she said.
That's what we had previously.
Oh, she moved all up there?
One that, she's the one that recommended doing this. Yeah, we had a very straightforward accessory dwelling bylaw definition.
And what was your rationale for that?
And her rationale is she thinks we should use section 3A definition.
And that's their definition?
In, so that we can be assured that it is, um, compliant for a simple majority vote.
Well, I I I I see that point. My, alls I'm saying is that, that this stuff is basically not definition stuff. This is bylaw stuff.
Right, but the enabling legislation didn't write it that way. Right, but the enabling legislation didn't write it that way, and she's being very cautious.
Yeah, but I think that, that if, if we move this to another place, you can show that it's the same.
It was in another place, though.
And I'm saying, I'm, I'm, I'm not afraid to disagree with lawyers.
Well, yeah, but.
And, and, and seriously, this, yeah, this has been something that we've tried to do for a long time, Brian.
Yes.
Is get the bylaw stuff out of the definition.
Right. And, and to, to, and to underline Ray's point, people aren't voting for the definition, they're voting for the whole bylaw. If the, if it's in the bylaw somewhere, then it, then it should comply, right? Well, we'll see.
I, I hear you, but, you know.
I, I said my piece.
So I can just, our definition before her recommendation was a subordinate dwelling unit within, attached to, or detached from an existing single family dwelling unit. That was.
And right here, you're, right here, you could say restricted in size and function per boom, and then refer to the bylaw.
I can ask her about that.
Again, we, and, and this comes out because you don't want redundancy. So that means that we got to put this 900 square foot limitation in the bylaw in one place only. And the one place it belongs is not in the definition. The one place it belongs is under the ADU bylaw.
So question.
So there, damn it.
Take that.
Do you, do you still, um, do you still disagree with the one half floor area? Or would we put that in the bylaw as well so that it does? So that it is congruent with the Section 3A definition?
This is just me. I'm not king. I'm more amenable to, to allowing the one half floor area than I am to having,
Okay.
having that restriction here.
Okay.
Yeah, let's pull it apart the way we had it, and we'll accept her change of the half floor area because I think the odds in this town that we're going to see that very often are so slim, and if we do, there's a special permit option.
There you go.
It's worth taking a run at it. I, I hear your argument, but.
Do you agree with me that it shouldn't be in two places?
Yes, because we shouldn't have to change definitions when we want to make changes to numbers.
Thank you.
Okay, so her next major recommendation, thought that she wanted to simplify the temporary absence. So she thinks, she, this is her, this is her recommendation, an owner of a lot containing accessory dwelling unit, we had, she'll give a written notice and she'll be resident on the property for at least a year prior to and between temporary absences. She recommends just saying, a temporary absence of six months each year will not constitute a violation of this bylaw. She felt that that eliminated the enforcement, you know, the difficulty with enforcement or the.
Sounds good.
Trying to.
Yeah, the same difficulty with enforcement. When the person's been gone for nine months, then you have to.
So we did not have this, the written notice and the owner shall be resident in the first round either. And then we found that somewhere and said, well, this is how we can contain it.
Well, yeah, we, we thought that was the, the right approach.
Right.
And maybe Sam also wanted some.
No, Sam likes this one better.
Oh, he does, huh? Because it's vague, huh?
Well, yeah, maybe.
Administratively, it's better too. Yeah.
Yeah.
Why the word temporary?
That defines a, well, it's not permanent.
Yeah, I don't think you need the word temporary.
Right, I see what you're saying.
But that does bring me to the question that I asked you to research for me, Sue, which was ties into the short-term rental bylaw. We sort of thought these two things were going to go in tandem. But I see something that the select board has decided to not do anything about that this fall.
Um, no, I, I did double check, at least unless they've changed their mind this evening, but I, their intent is to, um, to ask town meeting to appeal or remove that short-term rental by the, therefore making it illegal or not, not an allowed use, short-term rentals in the entirety throughout the town.
Wait, what?
So right now, there's a general bylaw that allows a, um, a short-term rental to be permitted or licensed by the zoning board, I mean by the select board. They're asking that that bylaw be eliminated, thereby short-term rentals would not be allowed from town.
Got it.
And I believe it's anything less than two weeks.
I'm not sure how that works unless you have something specifically prohibiting it. Right? Like if there's no bylaw that addresses short-term rentals.
No.
Because you can't do it.
Well, the, the, I think their plan is, if they're, they're going to come up with something in the future, the spring.
If they, if they feel it's needed.
Right.
Right, but, but the absence of a, of a bylaw doesn't mean that it isn't permitted. It means that it's not that the law is silent on the matter.
Exactly. So if there's, if there's no bylaw in place addressing short-term rentals, Airbnb, here I come. You got nothing in town saying I can't.
Right.
Well, I think they've been advised by town council, but maybe.
Well, town council screws up.
Maybe, maybe you need to look for a new job, right? Maybe you'd like to be town council.
No, I don't want to be town council, but this is the kind of stuff that, that, you know, we've been, you know, everybody here, we've been wrestling with this stuff for years.
No.
And, and although we're not, you know, we haven't passed any fricking bar exam, that's too hard. Only Tim can pull that off. But I mean, just, just because we haven't, we're not lawyers, doesn't mean that we can't read things and understand grammar and whatnot.
Well, I think, I think that a short-term rent, I may be wrong, maybe that a short-term rental is understood by the state to be a commercial use and therefore not allowed, but I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what they're hanging their hat on.
Okay, well, that, then that would be a convincing argument, but.
I'm not sure because I haven't been in their select board conversations for the select board.
Yeah, but I, I, I don't think that makes, yeah, I mean, that, that's a byproduct here. I just saw something in the chat about holding off. I don't not want to hold off on this bylaw.
No.
No.
Because, because this, those, again, those two issues, these two issues are, are really uncoupled. Everybody's thinking about the two being together, but they're different things.
They are, they are indeed, yes.
And the only way around it, if you chose to, is you could put a prohibition against short-term rentals on, on these units.
Yeah.
And I know we discussed it, that you don't want to.
Then we'll get into the same old two places in the bylaw that say different things. We don't want to go there.
No, and, and, and one of the ideas behind having the ADU is allowing people to stay in West Newbury because they can do.
Because they can afford to, yes. Yeah, so we don't want to deprive them of a right that may soon be there. We do not.
Okay, what, what's her next thing on the special permit, so?
Okay. So we'll, we'll, we accept that temporary, take out temporary and put an absence of.
Yep.
Yeah, although I, for the record, I'm grumbly about it.
So, so noted. Um, the, I think, let's see, I recommend include, oh, so this one, she wanted, we had said that you could, if you wanted something in the excess of 900 square feet, that you could get a special permit from the planning board. She was quite firm in saying that you need some standards for approval because otherwise you're taking, this would be a variance and you're taking that right again away from the zoning board of appeals. She said, if you have reasonable standards for the special permit, then that would be, she would say that was allowed. So I just put these in as placeholders. And you're welcome to use one, none, change any or all of them. So I've looked at some that are already in your bylaw, for example, the two times the lot size. So when would it be okay to have something that's larger than 900 square feet? One that she recommended, she had seen in other towns is, well, if you're putting it in an accessory dwelling unit that's already existent, it's already larger than 900 square feet, that would be a reason. She meant, we, so the other one is, well, if it's a lot that's two times the minimum, you could say one and a half times the minimum, you can use anything.
No, no, absolutely not.
So what are the standards that you would like?
Right, well, that's way too onerous for something that could be talked about 20 square feet, so I wouldn't favor number one.
Well, wait, oh, just conceptually, would we have a problem letting the zoning board of appeals handle this?
Well, if it's a variance, the only criteria that they can use is it's a, you know, it's a product of the lot, whether it's.
Right.
Yeah, the, the, you don't want to give it to, it's too hard to get a variance.
Variance is a very difficult bar to cross.
Okay, all right, thank you for that answer.
I'm not, I'm not sure that the setback thing seems relevant to me either. We're not talking about something huge.
No, but that's, that's a, that's a condition and it sounds, I think it could be.
Could be okay.
Acceptable. It, it's a lot rather than a double lot size.
You think it's necessary? Again, if you're in it, all right, so, all right, I get the existing structure. It's larger. But there again, I'd want to be able to control it. I wouldn't say, sure, you can do that whole four-car garage as an accessory unit.
Well, you still have, you still have control for a special permit, but again, she wanted some standards for when, what, why would you allow it? Give me, you know.
Well, say, for instance, say it were, say it were within a building and it was a 2,400 square foot house and you were splitting it first floor, second floor, and it was now 1,200. You know?
I understand the legal reason and why she wants to do this, but whoa, we can't possibly imagine all the reasons.
That's right.
And then put them down in writing. Because there's, there's, there's such potential diversity in all of this.
Yeah.
And, you know, I just mentioned the wheelchair accessibility or the small house. And once again, we can't put the 900 square feet here. We, we, you, you've got to just refer to Section 6.2.2 if that's where it's at.
Right, that's right.
So accessory dwelling units seeking relief from the criteria in Section 6.2.2.
Yep.
Is the only thing you can say there.
Yes.
And, 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 uh, I mean, do we have to specifically state that this?
She said that you should have some standards for approval. No, it doesn't need to be these. As I said, these were kind of placeholders. She caught me off guard.
Right.
So I was trying to think of, you know, what are some of the criteria? What are the kind of standard, the minimal criteria? Because you can certainly ask for more, but what are the, you know, when would you say, oh, not more than 900 feet makes sense?
Well, there again, we do grant special permits for other things and there are specific criteria, and they do have to do with things like area, 200-foot circle, all that stuff.
Exactly.
That's for an entire structure. This is for something much more.
What, what do you think, I mean?
What about the usual, you know, not more detrimental of that kind of thing? Is that a, that too objective, too subjective?
Not detrimental to butters or, uh.
Yeah, but we've already got that in our conditions for acceptance of the special permit. That, I don't.
You're right, yes, you're right, you're right.
This is, this is.
Right, right, this is just, this is just repeating what's in the special permit. If it's subject to the special permit, don't those criteria apply?
Those.
It's a different, this is a different special permit? Hmm.
Yeah, again, this is one, this is one where I'm, I'm respectfully pushing back on Attorney Stein.
Maybe we should, should we have her at the?
Oh.
I mean, we have a very long agenda for that evening and this.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure, we, why don't we just leave it as is and say, thank you, we, you, she's recommending it, but it doesn't mean we have to do it.
Yeah, that's right.
Here, here.
Yep, I'm fine with that. I, this, this one, yes, Ray, I agree with it. This really bothers me, this.
It doesn't make any sense. We need some direction.
I think, I think at some point you have to trust the town to elect planning board members that are going to be responsible in their, in their acceptance of special permits.
Yeah.
Per the guidelines of the bylaws which are laid, I think it's what, Section 8B or something.
Now, this is a very narrow concern she has about this new 50%, excuse me, versus two-thirds vote. So, you know, let's, uh, you know.
I think, I think this one was about, was about the fact that any, this would normally fall within, finding relief from this would normally fall within the, the ZBA. And she said, if you're going to, that's a very broad, you know, taking of their responsibility. So she said, that's, it's not about whether we have the right criteria or what criteria. She didn't really care what the criteria was. She said, you just have to limit it so that it's not seen as, that you're not open to a, um, you know, a challenge in that, that this is not your, this is not your, your right to do that. She didn't want you to be challenged. She said, so if you have criteria.
No, I, I see her point, but I, I, I go with Brian on this, this, you know, it's a recommendation.
Yeah.
Let's not take it.
Are we good?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is section, is section 11.2 the right one?
Um, I believe it's the newly.
Ah, right, 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 right.
That's the new, yes, it used to be eight something.
Right, thank you, thank you.
I need to get a new copy of that.
We knew that this, we knew that this would hurt me particularly late at night, but we went ahead anyway.
No, really throwing caution to the wind here.
Okay, I'm taking that out.
Yeah, period after bylaw, bylaws. Whoever it is, plural or singular.
Well done.
All right, we'll see what happens.
Is that it?
That's it.
Good.
Yeah, let me go back. She had very little to say about the non-conforming one. Can you see this?
Yes.
Is it the right size?
Yeah, it's fine. Frankly, we went over this with Sam, and I think if it hasn't changed from what Sam is recommending.
I don't think.
I didn't see any change.
Yeah, I don't think she changed.
Okay. Might wonder too, if he, if we can, is it reasonable to ask him to be at that hearing for these zoning bylaws?
Uh, yes, definitely.
That could be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, so we're done with that, correct?
Yes.
You want to get through the planner report?
Sure. So, we don't have to cover the first one, we've lived that one.
Right.
This is just talking about what we were.
Did that too, yeah.
Yes, we've already lived that one. The housing production plan, um, they're going to be hosting a subregional meeting of similar-sized communities tentatively into September and then follow up with an in-person one in the annex in October. What I'm finding is these things often fall out a month, so it may be October, November, we'll see. The land management and planning forum is being pushed off till November, which doesn't help with the ADUs, but The land management and planning forum is being pushed off till November, which doesn't help with the ADUs, but that's okay. We think we've got that covered. I shared with you the solar site feasibility screening study and report. And I think there are no immediate next steps. This is one of those that, you know, if something, if they decide on doing something, we'll, we'll have that in our pocket. Again, we're kind of, this has been, the existing conditions of town has been mapped on the corridor improvement study. Town staff are reviewing those, mostly Christine, to date. But they will look to present at that fall planning forum. And this was the information on the Evergreen Farm. That the, the town is working with Essex County Green Belt and a private owner to see if they can do to purchase that. They are looking for a private buyer to have four acres of unrestricted. And then also I should, and to mass wildlife is also in the mix. So.
Let's wish them good.
Yeah, so the private buyer actually is looking at 18 acres, 14 of acres. He wants to keep a CR on because he wants to continue with agricultural use. And then four acres would be unrestricted, basically the house and barn and a little bit of space around it.
The existing house and barn? There's no request here for further subdivision?
Well, I think that there's four acres. I think that could be developed.
Yeah, you got an additional house on there.
And or, and or clustered subdivision.
But it would be committed by the zoning out there. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Interesting.
Yeah. So that will be an article at Fall Town Meeting.
What, what, what's that 18 acres owner of a budding?
Wildlife. They're the mass wildlife. Oh, that's that.
That would go to the state.
Sorry, I missed a, uh, parentheses there.
Wonderful.
And then I just wanted you to be up to date on what's happening with the DPW.
Oh, I know.
Restructuring that. So you, basically using the folks that are in place to, you know, work with their strengths. So they're looking at a administration procurement and contract, which is Caitlin. And then highway, which is Butch, the LinkedIn grounds, I think, Brian?
Yes.
And then programs and projects is, is Christine, who is already in place.
Oh, yeah.
And then I, I think they intend to put some labor positions in there as well. And all of this kind of means that Caitlin's going to be pretty busy taking on new responsibilities and will probably be looking for an administrator for planning boards and other boards. I know conservation is looking for some administrative help.
I'm really surprised that they want to go this route.
Yeah?
Yeah, me too.
Really? Why?
Yeah.
Cause you get one director. You got one person responsible for it. Now, now the town manager is going to be dealing with four people instead of one.
Yeah, I, I, I just wonder.
Just seems to me like the mandates are quite diverse. You know, I think it was, it must've been pretty tough to be one person trying to oversee all that. I never got how.
Yeah, although, I mean, that's kind of standard practice, right?
I, I think maybe they didn't see the, the, the right person or the money was too, too much.
Yeah, maybe. Yeah. Well, they can always reconfigure again.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's a, a, a big burden for Angus to take on. But.
Yeah, I think, I think it's going to be more stressful to them. Maybe not.
Um, do we know when Caitlin, is, is she like just going to give up on us, Sue, or what, what, what's the deal?
No, I think they're, I think they, as soon as, I think the, the work through the labor unions and once they get all that straightened out, that they'll be putting out these, the call for this position, but I would certainly hope that we wouldn't be without her.
But the, the, the thought is that in, in the, she's still going to continue to help us or?
I think, I think by, before the end of the year, they would be, probably they would be looking to hire.
Okay.
That's my understanding. But I don't, there isn't anyone else to kind of pick that up in total.
Yeah.
Till they find us someone else.
It seems like their administrative need on the part of a lot of different boards and committees, and I know that can be confusing, but we've got to to, uh, the town manager to figure out how to staff it.
I know we're really happy with Caitlin, so we'll miss her.
I know, I know.
Well, there was a day before Caitlin and then we found her and she was great. So there may be another one out there too.
There you go.
I'm glad we got Sue.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed.
And then I just, you know, keeping you up to date on the stormwater management permits. I think I told you about this one last week, but I thought I'd put it in the report that they did, um, complete their first one. And there, and as you know, then application has also been received for 87 Crane Net Street. Which I'm sure is also on hold until they come up with a final plan.
Okay.
Good.
All right.
That's it.
Very good. Well, it's almost 10 o'clock. Um, does anybody really want to? They just go through, do we want to do any minutes or leave them for the next meeting?
There are two minutes for the first and, or the 18th and the first. I can pull them up if you'd like.
People take a look at them and, uh?
Yeah, they're pretty, they're pretty simple, actually.
Yeah.
Has anyone else had a chance to read them?
I, I took a look at them.
Yeah.
All right, let me see if I can get them up here in order. Maybe I'm going to have the first.
Anybody want to see that picture of the phone pole?
Yes, please.
Well, let's get the minutes here first. Yeah.
Yep.
I can find my share screen. Why can't I find that?
I'm seeing it.
Yeah, you're sharing your desktop.
Oh, you're already seeing it. I beg your pardon. All right. Try to make it.
Okay. Thank you.
So these are for August 1st. Were there any?
It was a July 7/18.
Yep.
Yeah, but we got this one up.
Let me see. I don't think I had any comments on this one. I had. Yes, we just have to remember, we still don't have those as built for Mr. Crowe.
Correct.
You'll remember that, right?
Yes. He's not going to, uh, get his permit until we have him, so.
Right.
I move to accept the, uh, August 1st, 2023 draft minutes as our minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Kirk Guy.
I. Five zero. Thank you.
I'm going to find, I'm going to find the other ones. Which was 7/18.
There we go.
Yay.
We did have a comment. Is this the one that talks about the? Hmm, no. Oh, yes. Uh, item two there, housing opportunities. Updated steps. The first line. A water consultant for the project. I think we should clarify though, this project doesn't have a water consultant. It's, is it Tatum Howard, the water consultant, water system consultant for the town? Would that be more accurate?
Um, okay. It is, it is actually, we do actually have money.
Do we? Oh, so are, oh, there be.
Project.
Okay, but could we at least identify it as the town's water consultant and name them?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Thank you.
You see that? Damn how she capitalized T in town, just like that.
Brainwashing.
That's just good.
That was my only comment. Forgot about water in the budget. Sorry, Sue, I didn't know that at the time.
Any other changes?
No.
No.
Move to accept as a member.
All those in favor? Brian Murphy.
Rick Cook Guy.
Tim Cronin.
Five nothing. Terrific. Thank you. And we're almost there. Uh, any other important details there, Sue, or?
Um, I think the only.
There he is. Thank you, Ray. Thank you.
I'm like, what did I do?
Hey, it's only an exit. No one wants to turn left out of there.
I think if you've got a big enough pickup truck and you go fast enough, you can fix that situation.
I, I'd be interested if the wires are still connected.
Right, that's the question. Yeah.
But I wondered, cause that could be really.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't, I'm still up at, up at the lake, but I, whether it's.
You know, those wires are still connected, because what else would they be connected to?
This is true. You're right. Yeah.
Terrifying.
But since we no longer have a DPW director and we do have some pretty good trucks out, out there.
Yes, yes. I think there's something slip between the cracks here. We, we better get a note off to Brad Dorr. And.
This isn't the DPW. This is the school project.
Oh, God.
Well, I'm sure it'll make snow plowing easier.
Yeah.
First day of school must've been fun with the buses.
Oh, God, too funny, too funny. Thank you, Ray. Yeah, well, that was a good way to end. Any, any other, anything, Sue?
The only thing that I wanted to make sure you knew about was the, um, the special permit that's coming in has already been advertised once or a butter notice has been sent. I think it was advertised in today's or it'll be advertised this week.
Or.
That, is that the common driveway?
Trisix Church Street for the Kendall, kennel.
Oh, oh, okay.
For the special permit for a kennel.
Wouldn't you, do you suppose it's part of the information for that meeting, you could remind us of the relevant bylaw sections for kennels?
Yes.
Thank you. That would be very helpful.
Yep, so I will.
It were 50 years ago.
We haven't done that for a long time.
This is a kennel, not a pigery, right?
Exactly. No grazing animals will be involved. So we're good.
I think the last one was on, uh, down in your area and.
But, well, there's a.
There, frisky, frisky something or whatever it is there.
That's my.
Doggy daycare.
Is it a whole daycare? Is it, I thought the kennel permit was just something that you got from the animal control officer. That's what I'm a little.
The kennel permit is, is, they do have to get a permit from Board of Health or the, um, but there is a interesting enough fee.
Okay, well, we'll, you'll, you'll let us know. We don't have to stay.
I was just going to say the use is permitted where this is permitted. It, it does have standards for the special permit.
Okay.
There you go.
Yeah.
Those standards.
That's right. So I will.
Okay, well, this has been a very interesting evening. Yeah, we got a lot of things to think about for the housing initiatives package, but we made a, I thought we made a lot of progress.
That was a great opportunity to educate members of the public because it is such a convoluted and complicated.
It sure is.
It sure is. But motion to adjourn? Second?
Yeah.
Enjoy your vacation, Deb.
Enjoy, Deb. Thanks, thanks for hanging in.
Happy as can be. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Enjoy. See you.
Thank you.
Good night, all.